Tina, it's seven o'clock. Excuse me, we're getting ready to start. Excuse me. Thank you. Give me a minute, please. Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the November 12, 2024 Hilliard City Council Regular Meeting to order. Councilwoman Hale will do the invocation, and then Weebloes, PAC 859, will lead the Pledge of Allegions.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. I want to lead us tonight in the Lord's Prayer, which is from the New Testament. It's also found in the Injio One of the Six Articles of Faith. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. Lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. Thank you.
Okay, will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Betts.
Here.
Mr. Carrier. Ms. Cole.
Here.
Ms. Hale.
Here.
Vice President Teeter.
Here.
Ms. Vermillion.
Here.
President Cottone.
Here.
Council has copies of the October 28, 2024 Special Executive Session and Regular Meeting Minutes. Are there any changes or corrections? Hearing none, these minutes stand approved. We will go into Commission and Board Reports. Board of Zoning Appeals, Emily Cole.
Council has been in the process of interviewing for replacement to fill the vacancy on the Board of Zoning and Appeals, and I believe we will be issuing that announcement this evening. Is that correct? Later in the agenda?
Correct.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Destination Hilliard, Greg Betts.
No report at this time, but the next meeting is tomorrow, the 13th of November.
Thank you. Environmental Sustainability Commission, Cynthia Vermillion.
We meet tomorrow at 5:45.
Thank you. Keep Hilliard Beautiful, Greg Betts.
I just want everyone in the community to know that Keep Hilliard Beautiful is hosting another volunteer cleanup event. It'll be this Saturday, November 16, from 9 to 11 at the Hilliard Square Shopping Center. The Kroger is the big anchor store there, and that is at 4674 Cemetery Road. So if you want to come out and find picking up trash cathartic like I do, please, please join us. Thank you.
Thank you. Morpsy, Ms. Crandall.
No update this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Planning and Zoning Commission, Emily Cole.
We meet this Thursday at 7:00 in this room.
Thank you. Public Arts Commission, Cynthia Vermillion.
No report.
Recreation and Parks Advisory Committee Commission, Peggy Hale.
We meet tomorrow at 6:00 here in this room.
Thank you. Shade Tree Commission, Andy Teeter.
No report.
Aging and Place Committee is mine. It's no report. Anyone else? Okay. Are there any changes to the agenda? All right. Under the Consent Agenda, there are two liquor permits on the, on the agenda. 3575 Main Street, which is a new C1, C2, D6 request, and 4051 Britton Parkway Transfer of Ownership. No objections were received, and this is to not request a hearing. Would anyone wish to move this item to the regular agenda for further discussion? Okay, then I'll entertain a motion and second to approve the Consent Agenda by voice vote. Still moved. Second. All in favor say aye. 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 Pose same sign. All right, this is the public portion of the meeting for public comments, and we have one person signed up for general comments. So, Mr. Nassar, if you want to come up to the podium, you have three minutes to speak.
We were here for the past three weeks, and we presented our proposal to you, and I hope you had a chance to look it over or whatever, so we can move forward with the design, premacultural design and implementation of the JLF farm, organic farm here in the Hilliard area. We're looking for 20 acres or more to implement this design and installation, installation of the farm. We're also looking to procure chickens, chickens, goats, cattle, or whatever animals, et cetera, that we can use, and these animals will fertilize the land, and we're looking for the land to be irrigatable and sustainable where we can produce the crops that's necessary, herbs, fresh fruits, beehives, and things like that, of that nature, where we can give, sell it to the public, and give it to different organizations, to food pantries. We did this all in Maine as well. The other point that we want to do is the, we need an area that's zone-free, that's accessible, north, south, east, and west, and to the interstate where we can move our product, our products to the markets, and it'd be accessible to the public where they can come. And we want the schools involved in Ohio State and other educational areas involved in this project, so that we can make it an easy project, and the people, they can learn and have a part in this structure, organization structure, where we can permit, we can deliver the products that we need and the sustainability. We also need the key, we need greenhouses, which are the key elements in this. We need greenhouses. We need livestock. We need raised beds, and we need barn, a barn for the, for the vehicles and for the storage of tools. And we also need waste management, sustainability where we can, where the bees and the bugs can, as pest control. So we need that as an additional to what we already have. And if there's any questions, I think we have like 20 seconds. You can ask me questions. I'm willing to give the question. This won't be the last time, because we have a lot more to go, but we've given you a synonymous of what we need in order to move forward and with this acquisition and design. Any questions from the council? She has one question up here, I think.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for coming to speak with us and present to us. I really appreciate your persistence. I was wondering if you'd had a meeting as of yet set with city staff?
Tonight was my first chance to meet with some city staff. I did meet with the Franklin County in, in the, in the Columbus. They referred me to here.
Okay.
The land is in Hilliard. The land is, Columbus is zero in land, so they referred it to Hilliard, to the Hilliard area, so that's why I'm here.
Wonderful.
We've been engaged for the last year with this.
City Manager Crandall, can we set up a meeting for Mr. Nassar at some point?
Yeah, our city staff's more than willing to meet with you and better understand what you're looking for and see if there's any way we can help.
Yes, yes, ma'am. And before I forget, Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. I'm a veteran myself.
Thank you for your service, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no one else to speak in a general way. So next up, we're moving to ordinances, second readings. Will the clerk please read Ordinance 2427 by title only?
Authorizing the issuance of not to exceed $13 million of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of funding the cost of acquiring real property and interest in real property for municipal purposes, retiring notes previously issued for such purpose, and approving related matters in connection with the issuance of notes.
Thank you. This is the second reading, public hearing on this ordinance. Has anyone signed up to speak, or is there anyone in attendance who would like to speak who did not sign in on this ordinance?
I had no one sign up.
Thank you. Does council have any questions? All right, will the clerk please call the roll? President Cottone. Yes. Ms. Vermillion. Yes. Vice President Teeter.
Yes.
Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
Mr. Betts.
Yes.
Pass 7-0. Thank you. There are no first readings, so we'll move on to resolutions. Will the clerk please read Resolution 24R86 by title only?
Appointing blank to the City Boards of Zoning Appeals.
Okay, so we need a motion and a second to add the name of the person that we selected? Still moved.
I'd second supporting blank.
Thank you. So Cole Antle. So that's your motion to add Cole Antle? Yes. Okay. All right, and then a vote? Yep. So this is as amended, 24R86 to add Cole Antle. Do you want me to reread the title?
Right, so there should be a vote on the amendment and a vote on adoption.
Correct. Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
President Cottone.
Yes.
Mr. Betts.
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion.
Yes.
Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Vice President Teeter.
Yes.
That's to add Mr. Antle, 24R86, supporting Cole Antle to the City Board of Zoning Appeals. Okay, so does someone want to motion and second?
Still moved.
Second. Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
President Cottone.
Yes.
Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Mr. Betts.
Yes.
Vice President Teeter.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion.
Yes.
Pass 7-0. Thank you. Dee, will you please read Resolution 24R87 by title only?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract for the replacement of playground equipment at Heather Ridge Park.
Is there a member who would like to motion and second?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, are there any questions? No questions? Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Carrier.
Yes.
Ms. Cole.
Yes.
Vice President Teeter.
Yes.
President Cottone.
Yes.
Ms. Hale.
Yes.
Ms. Vermillion.
Yes.
Mr. Betts.
Yes.
Pass 7-0. All right. Will the clerk please, please read Resolution 24R88 by title only?
Approving changes to the Plan Unit Development, PUD, concept plan for the development text for 14.877 plus or minus acres at 5550 Britton Park as subarea B4 of the Britton Central Plan Unit Development, PUD, plan and text to modify uses.
Is there a member who would like to motion and second?
Still moved.
Second.
All right, we have a staff report. Mr. Talantino.
Good evening, members of council. So this proposal is to modify the Britton Central PUD, Subarea B4, to add additional uses to that subarea. So currently, the permitted uses in Subarea B4 include offices and also restaurants within office buildings. Conditional uses include banks with or without drive-through service that are within office buildings and parking garages. Access to this site.
It's on John.
Access to the site, access to the site, which is a former office building on the freeway, there are two access points. One on Britton Central to write-in, write-out-only access point, and a full access point on Riggins Court. Proposed text modifications, there is some cleanup associated with those that will put the correct code sections in. So when this PUD was, excuse me, when this PUD was originally approved, it references the old zoning code. The zoning code was updated in 2014, so the applicant's helping us by changing the code sections to match today's code for this section. In addition to that, there are a number of proposed change, changes to the use list. So the Planning and Zoning Commission forwarded a unanimous recommendation to council concerning the proposed revised development text. And what the proposed text includes is, in addition to office building, or office uses, rather, for the whole building, development and testing labs and facilities, scientific research facilities, manufacturing, compounding, processing, packaging, testing, and assemblies, as long as no heavy industrial processes or hazardous materials are involved. Those are permitted for the whole building. The recommendation also included, on the lower two floors, training centers, be they corporate engineering, professional technical, or sales, health and fitness facilities. There is a proposed limit on the cumulative gross floor area for that use of 5,000 square feet. Daycare, nursery schools, and childcare establishments, not greater than 10,000 square feet of gross floor area. Event center reception hall with food and bar service, banks, credit unions, and other similar financial institutions. Science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So a STEM business incubator, basically, and there's a 20,000 square foot limit on that. Personal services in retail, not greater than 10,000 square feet of floor area. Those are the permitted uses on the lower two floors. Additionally, on the, on those two, conditional uses, public or private schools, restaurants, banks, credit unions, and other financial institutions with drive-through services. On the lower floor, where there's a, an existing cafeteria from the old office building, the proposal would be also to add the existing commercial kitchen for cafeteria, food prep, food commissary, catering businesses, food truck operations, or other off-site restaurant operations. So that could be done in different combination here. It could be something that is served in the building, or it could be, those facilities could be used to prepare foods that are sold off-site, whether it's food truck or delivery to a catering site. So there, the planning commission discussed generally the idea of having the office or RND and those other uses for any part of the building, the idea being trying to maintain the, the office-type uses for a good portion of this building. The PUD allows office only. We worked with the applicant on trying to expand those uses in ways that would be still consistent with the, with the original concept plan for this subarea, in this subarea. This is the comprehensive plan that was adopted last year, and it references for this site, recommends mixed-use centers around premium office sites. So it further says that, it references two sites, the, this site, the former BMW Financial Services Building and the Verizon Building, which is south of this along the freeway also. Basically says, since these sites are about a mile apart, they could be transformed into distinct mixed-use nodes or neighborhood centers that provide amenities to nearby workers and residents. But I think the key here is that the recommendation is mixed-use centers around premium office sites. So in working with the applicant, there was no desire to create uses or buildings around this site, but to change the nature of what's allowed in the building itself. If you have questions about the comprehensive plan, we can talk about this. This has some recommendations in there. This shows the site. It's this Subarea B4. You can see it's along the freeway. Generally, this PUD, in the blue areas are the office areas. The idea was that as you get closer to the freeway, the free-oriented offices are the, really the taller buildings. As you get farther from the freeway, the office buildings would be lower in height. As you get, the yellow and brown areas are the residential portions, and then in the middle, it's light pink kind of color. This was the commercial retail restaurants and the personal services area here. So you can see that the central amenities area was to serve both the residential portion to the west and the office portions to the east along the freeway. So, so this is the recommended PUD text that the planning commission forwarded. So if you have questions about any of that, we can cover those. To simplify that, it was, we put this in a floor-by-floor on that building, primarily because there was some confusion and discussion about uses on this building. And also, just to, just to make it a little clearer, we thought, from our original discussions with the applicant, there are floors, on the lower floors, we see yellow and blue there, have exit doors that are, that are at grade. And the original office building had, in their lobby, permitted uses for things like restaurants and banks, things that would be supportive of an office building. You go into a lobby, and sometimes you see those types of uses, retail or services uses. So the, the original thought was that those are the most appropriate places for those. But the idea was to try and keep the office-type uses, at least in most of that building. And the easiest way to show that is if you say, hey, on these two floors, that's half the building. If those are office-type uses, then the, the other two floors could have some combination. That was the intent of that. If that's too confusing, you know, that can be adjusted, I suppose. So the planning commission, again, let me go to their Record of Action, basically says that they recommend, or they approved unanimously the recommendation that's before you. With the PUD modification, as I laid them out, as you have them in your, in your materials by floor, there's some restrictions on those uses. And the idea is to just get, we want the applicant to be able to use a variety of uses in the building. This is kind of uncharted waters for us in terms of having a, an office building that is going to be used for several uses other than an office building use. So the commission was clear that they were wanting to be cautious in how they proceeded, did not want to have too wide a range of uses that they weren't sure about how it was going to be implemented. So I think this is kind of a first step. This PUD has been modified before, and we think that's possible again as, as things happen in the future. There's a need to do that, to be tweaked. That is a possibility. We wanted to make sure that the recommendation was something that council would be comfortable with, proving based on what's, on the original PUD and what it allows. And the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, the commission found that it was generally consistent with, with both of those. So do you have questions about any of that?
Ms. Crandall?
Good evening, members of council. I wanted to add to our staff presentation comments this evening, perspective on the economic development importance of this site and the entire I-270 corridor. I provided similar comments during the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Both the current zoning in place for this site and what's called out in the previous and the current community plans for our I-270 corridor are focused on the same underlying priority. That priority is that this corridor is a primary economic development driver for the city, providing key employment locations with numerous high-paying jobs that in turn translate into strong income tax revenue for our city. And as we all know, income tax is our primary revenue source that pays for the critical services we provide to our community, the infrastructure that's in place, and the many amenities we all enjoy throughout our parks, trails, or downtown and beyond. Those that helped envision and develop both the previous and current community plan identified the I-270 corridor as a focus area of those comprehensive plans, with this critical fiscal health goal in mind of preserving our financial sustainability today and into the future. In the 2023 Community Plan chapter that covers this I-270 corridor focus area, the very first paragraph in that chapter notes that the I-270 corridor is, quote, "front door to Hilliard," and that it is, quote, "a vital area of the city's economic health, since it's a prime employment location with visibility and access to I-270." I have a few slides that I want to note from the 2023 Community Plan. Can I have that advanced slide advancer? A couple of these are repeats of what John had in his presentation, but the first slide is just the concept plan for the I-270 corridor that you find in the 2023 Community Plan. The 5550 Britton Parkway is the site that's furthest to the north. The number one on that denotes that it's mixed-use center around a premium office site, and the dark purple is that it would be developed as urban mixed use. Can you advance the next slide? There were eight big ideas that were called out as part of the 2023 Community Plan, and number six on that list, and these are no, in no particular order, is to encourage mixed-use development around premium office sites. Next slide, please. And John also showed this slide, but this one particularly calls out the mixed-use centers around premium office site, reiterating some of what was envisioned and discussed in the big idea, number six. It specifically calls out BMW Financial and Verizon as the two sites of highest importance. You know, there's been some misinformation that the city or city staff or, that we would want the BMW building to be taken down, and that's, that's definitely not the case. That's misinformation. The concepts in here are that it would become more vibrant with additional uses built around the site. And then finally, perhaps most important... And then finally, perhaps most important, as part of the 2023 Community Plan development, a firm was hired that specializes in gathering data that will determine the revenue and cost per acre of all areas throughout the city based on zoning and location. And this is the results of that data analysis. And if you look in the upper right-hand corner, that highest green column that's furthest north, that is 5550 Britton Parkway. And it specifically says that premium office area, as it notes, he says, "premium office areas, areas along I-270 with high concentration jobs and highly paying paid jobs have revenue that far exceeds the long-term costs. They're in the most fiscally productive places in Hilliard today." So that is really the question before council today is to preserve this as that or to make some other decision that would bring that green column down or potentially turn it to red. The current PUD zoning of this site is for office use with some minimal supportive uses that to that primary office use. And for 20-plus years up until the latter part of 2023, BMW Financial Services occupied the building as a major employer and income tax contributor. It's another piece of misinformation that we've heard. They just vacated that building a year ago. You know that this site is still viable for companies looking for this type of highway frontage in central Ohio, both as a standalone building as it sits today and as a redeveloped mixed-use site. All you have to do to understand that viability is to look just a bit south of this site to all the development and redevelopment along Hilliard's I-270 frontage. True Point is a perfect example, the type of mixed-use development that can happen on other sites along this corridor. True Point, once fully developed, will have 300,000 square feet of office space, approximately 50,000 square feet of restaurant, hotel, co-working space, and close to 300 luxury apartments. At the first planning and zoning meeting where this rezoning was considered, Mr. Painter said that the market will not support a single tenant and that their goal is to repurpose the building with a school and other uses. Again, we know the market will support premium office building uses with good, high-paying jobs. In addition to True Point, we're seeing a surge in development along 270 for R and D, advanced manufacturing, high-tech startups, and headquarter facilities. As I mentioned previously, staff's recommended PUD tax changes include these types of uses to increase the viability of the building. I'll point to the former highlights for children building at 4555 Lyman Drive as further proof of this corridor's viability for these highly sought-after employment uses. If we go back to November of 2020, a case for that property was in front of Hilliard's Board of Zoning Appeals, and that case was a request for approval of a non-conforming use. The attorney representing the applicant and the building owner both conveyed to the Board of Zoning Appeal members that the building would never be marketable as a higher use than what they were asking for. In essence, they were asking the board to settle for a far less desirable use. I was able to attend that meeting and make the case for the importance and viability of this area of our community to improve our fiscal health. Fortunately, the Board of Zoning Appeals denied the applicant's request. If we fast forward to just a few weeks ago, many of our city council members and members of our staff attended the inauguration of ForC Power, a multinational smart battery company, as they opened their North American headquarters in that same building on Lyman Drive. Several hundred people attended that event, including the governor, ForC's CEO, and the head of Jobs Ohio and One Columbus. And this was a Jobs Ohio and One Columbus project that they helped Hilliard to obtain. Holding true to the goals of our community plan and a little patience brought a significant win to the state of Ohio, the central Ohio region, and most importantly, the city of Hilliard. Transitioning back to the case before you this evening, we have met with Mr. Painter and representatives of his client on several occasions to understand their desired uses for this building. What you have before you this evening are the Planning and Zoning Commission's unanimously approved PUD tax changes as recommended by your city staff. As part of staff's recommended PUD tax changes to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we expanded employment uses beyond office to include other high-end employment uses that we would want to attract and that would make the building marketable. We have agreed to several supportive uses, as John mentioned, with square footage limitations, a STEM-type incubator also with a defined maximum square footage. Finally, a school use is included as a conditional use, also with square footage limitations. Going beyond these recommendations would further compromise the economic development value of this site. In closing, I just want to say that I wish we were not here tonight with the level of tensions surrounding this decision and the divisiveness that it's caused between the city and members of our Muslim community. I wish the applicant or the representative would have reached out to the city staff before purchasing this building. We could have helped them understand the importance of this building and site as a premium office location and how much that translates into the city being able to provide critical services, infrastructure, and amenities to our community. And then hopefully, we could have helped them explore other alternative sites to consider as there are numerous other areas of the city that have zoning more suitable to the uses the applicant desires to have. Thank you for your time this evening. Happy to answer any questions. If there's any other specific questions related to economic development, we also have David Meadows here this evening, our Economic Development Director. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crandall. We can now have the applicant, Mr. Painter.
I did my deadlift exercises this morning. They made me do it again with all these petitions they have signed in support of this application. Members of the Hilliard City Council, as you know, my name is Nathan Painter, 5029 Cemetery Road. With me as counsel tonight is Joe Miller and Chris Ingram on behalf of the Voorhees Law Firm. It is nice to see everyone here tonight. I'm not sure what happened, but you guys used to, we used to be a lot more together, so to speak. I want to start by saying that as I will show you in this presentation, as my clients will show you here tonight, what they have presented, the plan that they have presented meets Ms. Crandall's interpretation of the Hilliard City Comp Plan and will maximize tax revenue for that site. I will submit to you that in actuality, what the city proposes undermines the goal of the Hilliard City Comp Plan and is likely to minimize tax revenue off of that site. I am proud to represent my client, Britton Parkway Holding Incorporated, an extension of the NOR Islamic Cultural Center, in seeking full approval of their PUD modification requests set forth under application number PZ-24-47, filed on July 2, 2024, and particularly as described in the zoning text submitted that same day. Before I get in my comments on behalf of the applicant, I request and move that all zoning text, applications, staff reports, and all other documents introduced under PZ applications, 24-40 and 24-47, be submitted into the record here tonight, along with my written testimony submitted on September 12, 2024, to the P and Z Commission, my letter to President Cottone dated November 11, 2024, Mr. Robert Skipwiler's letter dated November 4, 2024, the community petition in support of the community center at NOR Ohio signed by 4,426 supporters, letters of support from local Muslim-owned businesses, letters from citizens to the city council submitted to the city, as well as all other documents and exhibits presented here tonight. The NOR Islamic Cultural Center, the NOR Center, has been a catalyst for bringing a vibrant culture to the Hilliard community socially and economically. Members of the NOR Center are our neighbors, our business owners, our business partners, and most importantly, your constituents. As you can see from the first slide up here, the site at that 5550 Britton Parkway consists of 14.9 acres, is located, as you know, on the northeast corner of the city, to the west side of 270. And if you'll notice, based on the stars, it's very near the NOR Islamic Cultural Center that currently exists on Wilcox Road. It is a perfect site for these folks to expand their uses at the same time providing the city a vibrant and dynamic economic center. My client, through its holding company, now wishes to expand the NOR Center activities, including prayer and worship to 5550 Britton Parkway while at the same time transforming the existing vacant building into a neighborhood center that provides a creative mixed-use for the community, including access to medical care, professional services, educational services, retail and childcare, among other requested uses. This mix of uses is specifically designed to generate income tax revenue for the city, property taxes for the school and township, while at the same time addressing current needs of the NOR Community Center. You slide two. As you can see, it is currently zoned PUD, as John mentioned. The text permits limited, office use with limited ancillary supports. However, this site is surrounded by a number of PUD uses within Hilliard. It also has retail and apartments within the city of Hilliard, and as Mr. Talantino pointed out, just to the west is a bunch of residential. Slide three. This is the exterior of the property from both sides, one from the highway, one from along, I think it's Riggins Court. Next slide. This is the interior of the property. For those of you who have not been in it, the best way I can describe it is think of huge airport terminals stacked upon each other. I mean, they literally do look like airport terminals, like you should be waiting for a Delta flight. Go back real quick. As you can see on the lower level, it has a cafeteria space. As John mentioned earlier, that is a $3 million investment that BMW did that can be used. Right now, it's just sitting there not being used at all because we don't have the use. On July 2, 2024, my client, BPH, submitted a straightforward PUD amendment request to the city. That request was to modify sub area B four, to change the existing PUD, the proposed PUD, and appropriate mix of uses, including a STEM school, worship center, business incubators, laboratories. Request satisfies the requirements of zoning section 111706. Let me stop here. These uses that were requested were not just drawn out of a barrel. My client put a significant amount of research and talking to various people in the community to come up with these uses so that we could not only address their needs, not only economically needs, but coexist with what the city is trying to do, especially with that STEM and technology. Instead of reviewing BPH's zoning application on the merits, the city administration has taken this application and replaced the requested PUD amendment with what it subjectively believes the usage should be on that site. The city has usurped the role of a private property owner, asserted itself as developer of my client's private property, and is attempting to voice its own, voiced its own subjective view of how that private property should be used and operated to complete exclusion of BPH's rights to operate its property as it see fits. Go to the next slide. This is an illustrative summary of those uses that were requested, the community center with religious activities, public and private schools, STEM, event center, training center. You can also see the proposed limitation on some of those uses, health and fitness, office, including co-working space, medical, business incubators, development, testing laboratories, retail, manufacturing, and government. Good, next one. The Discover STEM, pause here and say the Discover STEM is a very exciting use. It is a world-renowned incubator for schools or for students to have STEM education. Those students at that facility have created over 200 patents, excuse me, 200 patents, numerous startups, and I think their goal is to create a billion-dollar startup. And hopefully, with the uses, we can have that operation brought here to the city of Hilliard to be very exciting. Go to the next one. I want to pause here to give council the right history of the application and address the absurd notion that the city has been compromising. They haven't. As you can see, we submit, BPH submitted the application to PZ-24-40 to request modifications back in June. That was subsequently withdrawn because of the numerous objections and frankly, made-up goblins and phantoms of the city of what we could and could not do, including retail outlets and whatever. So in cooperation, we pulled it to get it right. On July 2, 2024, BPH submitted application PZ-24-47 to request modifications to the PUD text. On August 8, staff recommended, excuse me, substantial changes to the proposed PUD text, limiting essential uses such as school and worship. In that time, we submitted a revised PUD text to address some of the concerns that the city raised. On August 8, 2024, at the Planning Commission meeting, based at the request of the commission, BPH pledged to work in good faith with the city administration to resolve areas of dispute. On the following day, on August 9, 2024, I reached out via email to Mr. Talantino to meet, hopefully come to a compromise. And in his email response to me on August 14, 2024, Mr. Talantino responds, quote, "Additional discussions are not going to change the staff position." End of the negotiations. Go to the next one. On August 15, 2024, Mr. Boggs states that all discussions with the city must go through him. On September 5, 2024, out of nowhere, from Mr. Boggs, the city, for the first time dictated that the text that you see here tonight should set forth uses floor by floor. On September 11, 2024, after BPH threw me, attempted again to negotiate with the city, Mr. Boggs responded, emailed to me, "City staff will stay as they are." Now, September 12, 2024, we had the planning commission, where the staff again recommended substantial changes to the PUD text, and the commission announced we approved that PUD text change as recommended by staff. I will note for the record, the commission did not vote on BPH's proposed PUD text. As I stated in my letter of November 11, 2024, to Council President Cottone, as a former member of the Board of Zoning Appeals and City Council, I am extremely and very concerned with how BPH has been treated with its straightforward amendment request. Rather than proceeding on BPH's zoning application as set forth in the manager's report to council, the application before council tonight is significantly different than what BPH seeks to do with its own property. BPH's application has been replaced with a new version that is based on city staff's and the Planning and Zoning Commission's subjective desires. Never in my experience, serving and working on behalf of the city, have I seen an applicant treated in this manner. Moreover, never in my time as a member of the Board of Zoning Appeals and City Council has this city dictated to a private property owner how it may use this building on a floor-by-floor basis, nor can I find such an event to occur in this city since I have left public service. This prescribed treatment and limitation of uses on a floor-by-floor basis is, per staff's own words, quote, "made up." This assignment of uses by floors, as admitted by, as admitted by the city administration, fails to take into account consideration the building's engineering, its mechanicals, ingress and egress, bathrooms, and other physical components of the building. It is clearly an arbitrary capricious act by the city with no factual evidence or basis to justify these assignments of uses by floor. Moreover, the city cannot and has not point to any health, safety, or welfare reason to support this prescribed assignment and limitation of uses on a floor-by-floor basis. This limitation must be removed as a matter of law. Let me be crystal clear, there is no applicable law preventing this council from granting any of the uses requested by my client. Indeed, section 111703-dash-permitted-use states states, quote, "Any land use or combination of land uses may be considered for inclusion with a planned unit development," close quote. Hence, any advice... Hence, any advice that you have received that council cannot permit these uses is wrong, plain and simple. Moreover, BPH maintains that it is entitled as a matter of law to the approval of the zoning texts BPH submitted to the city that was before the planning and zoning commission on August eighth, two thousand twenty-four, and September twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, respectively. Further, any representation made to you that the Tree of Life Christian School versus City of Upper Arlington case provides cover to the city from liability, should the council deny, BPH's zoning application is false. Tree of Life case is not applicable to this matter for at least two reasons. First, in Tree of Life, Upper Arlington specifically prohibited schools, public or private, in the area that Tree of Life wanted to put its school. In this matter, conversely, as stated above, there is no prohibition against a school at fifty-five fifty Britain Parkway. Second, the uses requested by BPH for the subjective property will generate significant income tax as presented in the Tree of Life matter. This council is required to review my client's zoning request pursuant to chapter eleven seventeen of the Hilliard Ordinance Plan Unit District. Pursuant to this chapter, as I stated before, section eleven seventeen oh three states, quote, "Any land use or combination of land uses may be considered for inclusion within a planned unit development," close quote. Hence, requested uses such as schools and public worship and community centers with religious activities are clearly permissible under Hilliard's code at the subject, at the subject property. Application number PZ twenty-four dash forty-seven seeks to amend an existing approved PUD. Pursuant to section eleven seventeen oh eight, subsections C through E, quote, "Reposed modifications to a PUD requiring a recommendation by the Planning and Zoning Commission, subsection C or D above, shall be forwarded to City Council in the form of a resolution, and council shall consider this legislation pursuant to the review slash approval process of sections eleven seventeen oh five, B two and three," close quote. Section eleven seventeen oh five, three C states, titled action states, quote, "After the public hearing, council shall vote to approve, approve of supplementary conditions or not approve the concept plan and zoning change based on the standards of section eleven seventeen oh six. All motions shall be made in the affirmative. Any council action which approves the concept planning and zoning changes with new or different supplementary conditions than those recommended by the commission shall only take effect if passed or approved by not less than the majority of membership of the council." Thus, council to approve application number PZ twenty-four dash forty-seven must revise the PUD's development text recommended by PNZ to insert the zoning text requested by BPH in its application and approve it with four votes in the affirmative. Go to slide eleven. As you can see on the slide, sections one eleven seventeen oh six, these are the review standards that the applicant has to meet to get approval, and I'm going to show you in a second that we do meet this. So hang tight, because I got to make the record. This council's review of BPH's PUD amendment request itself starts with section eleven seventeen oh six of the zoning code dash review standards. As I will demonstrate shortly, City Council must approve BPH's amendments to the PUD text because the review standards are easily satisfied. BPH's requested amendments to the PUD do not alter the existing building's footprint. Moreover, BPH has filed the city's comprehensive plan to put forth a redevelopment of a large office building that will enable it to become an attractive center for nearby residents and a viable property for years to come. For these reasons and other reasons, the amendment is straightforward because as far as review standards are concerned, they were satisfied through the construction of the existing building. BPH's amendments simply go to the uses inside that building, none of which are prohibited by the review standards and applicable law that guides council's review here tonight. Section eleven seventeen dash oh six sets forth a review standard under which BPH's application is to be reviewed. Quote, "In considering a planned unit development request, the planning and zoning commission shall find that the proposed development meets all applicable requirements and qualified conditions, as well as the following general standards. A, purpose of the PUD. The proposed development shall be consistent with the stated purpose of this district as found in section eleven seventeen point oh one." I will note, first of all, remember that this site has already been, already been zoned as a PUD and has already satisfied this requirement. Section eleven seventeen oh one of the Hilliard Ordinance states that a PUD may be permitted for the following purposes. A, provide for flexibility and development that will result in a better project for the developer, residents, and users, as well as for the city in general. This site meets this purpose as a requested use, provides flexibility to use the site in a commercially viable way, while at the same time providing flexibility to its owners. Residents and users are provided a better development as requested uses provide a creative mix of uses for the surrounding community. And the flexibility sought conforms to market conditions, and the city's comprehensive plan that recognizes that single-use corporate officer, office sites, quote, "may not be competitive for future tenants," close quote. B, for purposes of PUD, preserve existing natural assets such as tree stands, floodplains, open fields, wetlands, lakes, streams, and the like. Because this site has already been zoned as a PUD, that purpose has been met. C, accomplish a more desirable and sustainable residential environment that would be possible through the strict application of minimum requirements of this code. Strict compliance with the current approved use would result in a single-use corporate office site that, quote, "may not be competitive for future tenants," close quote, as acknowledging the comprehensive plan. This would lead to a less vibrant area of the city and deprive the residents of this community of the medical, professional, social, and educational opportunities that BPH is trying to provide through its requested uses. BPH's plan would encourage the use of lands in ways which are most in accord with the characteristic, character, adaptability, and market preferences and demands. D, encourage utilization of open space and the development of recreational amenities generally located within walking distance of all living units. Once again, the proposed, this purpose was fulfilled when the site was zoned as a PUD. E, encourage the use of lands in ways which are most in accord with their character and adaptability. Once again, this purpose was fulfilled when the site was first zoned as a PUD as well. Further, since this building was constructed for a single-user tenant, which is no longer supported by the market, the use, the uses requested by BPH encourages that the site be repurposed in a way that is in accord with the building's structure and provides adaptability to the building be available for various uses that the market may demand. Finally, F for purposes, encourages the efficient use of land by facilitating economical and suitable arrangements for buildings, streets, utilities, and other land use features. Once again, this purpose was fulfilled when the site was first zoned as a PUD. The use requested by BPH are more economical in the current single-use tenant based on the market, and the uses requested are more suitable to providing a sustainable use of the building. Going back to eleven seventeen oh seven, the next element is qualifying conditions. The proposed development shall satisfy each of the qualifying conditions as stated in section eleven seventeen oh two. Section eleven seventeen oh two states that a minimum, "All proposed planned unit developments shall meet the following qualifying, qualifying conditions as applicable to be considered for approval." A, location. Planned unit developments may be located in any part of the city, subject to meeting all other applicable requirements. This is met as a city, as a site already is zoned as a PUD and meets all the requirements of chapter eleven seventeen oh two. PUD purpose, the applicant shall demonstrate that the planned unit development will achieve two or more of the purposes listed in section eleven seventeen oh one. As demonstrated above, BPH's zoning request meets various purposes in section eleven seventeen oh one, including providing flexibility and development, preserving natural assets, accomplishes a more desirable and sustainable environment, protects open space, and has walkways, is an adaptive use of the site as constituted, and provides efficient use of the building. BPH's request provides a complimentary mix of land uses for the property and become a viable asset in light of their press demand for office uses, office users. C, the size. Minimum site size for a planned unit development shall be based on the type of development as shown in the table. Sites containing less than the minimum required acreage may be approved by the city council if the council determines that the site will advance the purpose of the planned unit development district. Res zoning, one, res zoning the property to a PUD will not result in a significant adverse effect upon nearby properties. Once again, it's already a PUD site, requested uses are not more intensive. Two, the proposed uses will complement the character of the surrounding area. Uses will provide a more vibrant building rather than remaining a vacant property, will provide access to medical and professional services to surrounding residents, and provide the city with new and distinct educational opportunities, and provide the Nor community opportunities to serve their members, many of whom are Hilliard residents. Three, the purpose and qualifying conditions of the PU district can be achieved within a smaller area. Once again, the building on the site exists. Four, PUD zoning is not being used as a means to circumvent, circumvent conventional zoning The site is already a zoned PUD. Modification of current zoning uses is to allow uses that are a reflection of the market, address the needs of the Hilliard community, and address the needs of the Nor Center community. Moving on to eleven seventeen oh seven, C, comprehensive plan. The planned unit development shall be consistent with our recommended future land use patterns, goals, guiding principles contained in the city of Hilliard's comprehensive plan. I will note, all quotes from here come directly from the comprehensive plan. This does meet the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan recognizes that sites such as fifty-five fifty Britain Parkway, quote, "not competitive for single tenants," close quote. Two, the comprehensive plan calls for creating mixed-use centers around buildings of this type, and that, quote, "The city should allow for creative options to resume this site and make it more viable," close quote. BPH's application for various uses are designed to transform this single-use building into, quote, "a district," close quote, "acre for mixed-use nodes and develop a, quote, neighborhood center," close quote, "that provides amenities for nearby workers and residents." These amenities consist of access to medical and professional services, educational services, and daycare. These uses are requested to provide support to the Hilliard residents and workers in that area of town that have limited access to such services currently in that area of the city. As recognized by the city comprehensive plan, is necessary to rethink the type of uses, rethink the use of these types of facilities as viable employment centers. And by being allowed additional uses, BPH will have the flexibility to adapt to the current market and provide the market a variety of opportunity to bring jobs and other employment to the city. On page one thirty-two of the comprehensive plan, also calls for the city to, quote, "to focus on creating a series of walkable mixed-use nodes," close quote, "that involves a concept of developing around existing high-value offices." Here, BPH is attempting to create the epicenter of that first node by having a facility with employment, medicine, education, community centers, and limited retail. It is the hub that the city can build spokes off of, is the first hub that you guys can have as a city. With the sidewalks already in place, Hilliard residents and nearby neighborhoods can walk to this epicenter of an urban mixed-use, quote, "node." The requested uses will also help to expand the Nor Center and provide our residents of the Muslim faith a neighborhood center where they can meet up with friends and family at the proposed community center and benefit from, from the, benefit from their various professional and personal services that the requested uses will provide, including the opportunity to have a place to reflect and pray. The requested uses will increase the income tax generation off of this site. Currently, there is no income generation at that site. With a proposed use, a minimum of sixty percent of the site will be dedicated to office, professional, medical, and other similar, similar uses for city income tax generation. On page forty-five of the comprehensive plan, it states in your comprehensive plan that premium office sites generate fifty-eight thousand dollars per acre in income taxes. Thus, that sixty percent of that site being used for office, professional, and medical, and other similar uses, that translates into thirty-eight thousand dollars per acre, assuming BPH does not go over that sixty percent minimum and have more office space, more professional services, more doctors. This income tax revenue generation is still more than that thrown off by the warehouse and light industrial and flex employment space that this city has been approving ad nauseam around the city. That's pretty comprehensive plan. Surrounding uses, the development shall be compatible with the existing and intended uses surrounding the prop, subject property. Excuse me. Requested uses are no more intense than the prior use by BMW. Moreover, as stated above, the requested use by BPH will provide access to medical, professional, educational, and other services to nearby neighborhoods. Indeed, this site was specifically chosen by BPH to provide its members with these necessary services and add an additional space for religious and civic activities. Additionally, the comprehensive plan encourages flexible, flexible zoning for these sites to ensure infill development can occur within insignificant office buildings to enable properties such as this to remain viable. Mr. Wyler's expert, expert analysis of the subject property and BPH's proposed uses under current market conditions establishes that BPH's requested uses, quote, "will actually foster activity on this site and further align what the city envisioned for this site in its comprehensive plan." C, natural environment. The design and layout of the planned unit development will be harmonious with the natural character of the site and surrounding area and shall employ best management practices to insert, ensure their conservation. The applicant does not request to change the layout of the site and will maintain current practices to maintain the natural character of the site as it remaining. Public facilities and services is element F. The proposed development should not place undue burden on the capacity of public facilities and services such as, but not limited to, two, roads, fire and police protection, water, sanitary sewer service and drainage. Once again, already provided to the site, there is no evidence that BPH's requested uses will place an undue burden on the public facilities and utility servicing this site. No city department other than the city planning department has raised any objections or concerns with BPH's proposed amendments. G, protect the health, safety, and welfare. The planned unit development shall not contain uses or conditions, or conditions of use that may be injurious to the public health, safety, or welfare. No safety issue will be created with the requested uses. The requested uses will enhance the accessibility to healthcare and other professional services for residents in the area. Moreover, these requested uses will generate income tax revenue for the city to support the city's services and increase the value of the property for real estate tax purposes which will support our local schools and township. Indeed, the only evidence in the record is that BPH's amendment will improve the public's health, safety, and welfare by transforming a large vacant office building along I two seventy into a collaborative ecosystem where local businesses can actively participate and sponsor community events. Element H, consistent with all applicable standards and requirements, the building previously met the applicable building standards set forth in section eleven seventeen oh four B as modified by council previously. And then, I, final development plan. The final development plan is substantially consistent with the representations made and plans shown during the concept plan stage of approval. This element is not applicable as the building has already been through this process, and BPH's proposed, proposed amendments do not alter the existing structures' footprint. And finally, J, recognizable and sustainable benefits. Approval of the planned unit development will result in a recognizable and substantial benefit to the users of the project and to the community, which would not otherwise be feasible or achievable under conventional zoning districts. Requested use will enhance the accessibility to healthcare and other professional services for residents in the area. This site will also provide a STEM school for children, a community worship center, restaurants, and retail. Moreover, the requested uses will generate income tax revenue for the city to support the city's services and increase, increase the value of the property for real estate tax purposes, which will support local schools and townships. School project alone will generate an estimated payroll of three million dollars. The school project alone will generate an estimated payroll of three million dollars. As the above analysis demonstrates, BPH has met the review standards of section eleven seventeen oh six, met the purposes of a PUD set forth in eleven seventeen oh one, and has met the qualifying conditions set forth in eleven seventeen oh two. Therefore, as my client's PUD request meets applicable law, BPH has the right, as a matter of law, to have its requested PUD amendment approved by this council. Before concluding, I do want to give one example to show how this city has treated different people differently. This city donated one million dollars to the YMCA to build a community center, a community-type facility. For nine years and eleven months, there was a worship service every Sunday in that building. I know it because I went there, I listened to that music, it was Movement Church. They still have a prayer center in there. It is a Christian organization. These folks who are Muslim are asking for the same thing, and you're not giving it to them. There is absolutely no legal reason whatsoever that the city can point to to deny BPH's application. Indeed, as BPH's zoning application meets the various requirements of chapter eleven seventeen and aligns well with the city's Comprehensive Plan, this council has very little, if any, discretion to deny my client's PUD amendment request. If BPH's PUD amendment is denied by the council, it is not because the law prevents its approval or allows its denial. It's because this council on its own volition, without any legal basis to deny, decides to decline BPH's zoning applications on a basis not supported by law. With that, I will turn it over to Fadi Suliman to continue the presentation. Thank you.
Council President Cottone, members of City Council, I'd like to begin by wishing everyone a belated Veterans Day. May God bless our veterans and all those who put themselves in harm's way to keep us safe. I'd also like to thank the members of the City Council and the city staff for their service to our beloved city. We know that your jobs may be difficult at times, and you should know that we appreciate you for all your efforts to foster a forward-thinking community where diverse businesses, organizations, and residents can thrive. God bless you all. My name is Dr. Rani Abaza. I'm a urologist specializing in robotic prostate and kidney surgery. I did three today before coming here, and I've practiced here in central Ohio since two thousand eight. I'm also the chairman of the Board of North Islamic Cultural Center, the parent of Britton Parkway Holdings, BPH that owns the property at five-five-five-zero Britton Parkway. Our center and mosque at five-zero-zero-one Wilcox Road has served the growing community in Hilliard since two thousand six. When our center was built, way back then, it was in the middle of cornfields, with cornfields as far as the eye can see. Members of our community even thought it was crazy to build such a large facility with such a massive parking lot. Yet our center has experienced tremendous and rapid growth that really nobody could have predicted. While our center at Wilcox Road has become a landmark now in the region, our community is outgrowing the center's current footprint. Before COVID, we had planned originally to expand the center onsite, and the city actually approved that expansion plan, and we were this close to breaking ground, and then COVID happened. During that time, we realized that our expansion was not going to solve some of our growing community's problems, one of which, of course, is parking, traffic, which I'm sure you're aware of. We therefore made a strategic decision not to expand our center on Wilcox Road, but rather to adopt a spoken wheel model to serve our community in multiple locations and relieve the congestion at the Wilcox location. We now have two satellite campuses, one in New Albany, one in Plain City, and we're actively working on a third satellite currently. We also just yesterday broke ground on creating a third entrance to our parking lot at Wilcox, which we believe is eighty-one thousand dollars well spent to help all of our neighbors in that area who are being impacted. Now, of course, our property at five-five-five-zero Britton Parkway is the reason that we're here tonight, and that's also critical to our long-term strategy of serving our growing community. Our original intention behind purchasing the Britton building was, from the beginning, to use a small portion of the building for community activities and religious worship as a replacement for our plan previously to have expansion of the Wilcox Road location, and then to revitalize the rest of that empty building, filling it with businesses so that it would be a sustainable investment for our community. Now, one might ask the question, why would we be so bold as to think that we could do this when the previous owner gave up trying to find a tenant and defaulted on their twenty-six million dollar loan? Why did they hightail it out of town and leave this building there to go up for auction? And City Manager Crandall makes it sound like it's such an easy thing to fill the building and find a new tenant. It's only been empty for a year, but obviously the city knew well before that that BMW was vacating, as did the owner of the building, and yet the owner of the building left this multimillion-dollar structure and hightailed it out of here, and, you know, if it was that easy to find a tenant, you would think they would have done so. So why do we think that we can make this project work? Well, in large part, the answer is because we have such a large community full of such expertise in a wide range of fields, including finance, real estate, project management, and development. We're also blessed to have a large donor base with the financial resources to help us with all of the steps necessary to make this project viable. Equally important, if not more important, is the huge customer base that our community represents, which will attract businesses to that building in addition to all of the Hilliard residents who live and work in that area. The community center that we have planned to have in this building from day one, again, to replace that onsite expansion that we had originally planned, was not only to serve our community, but also to serve the greater Hilliard community by bringing that customer base to this empty building and bring life to this project. While every Hilliard resident will be able to come to this building and benefit from it, we know that our pool of community members will come to this building because they know when they come to this building and use the businesses in this building, they're supporting their center. And that will help us attract the businesses to fill that building. Unfortunately, this concept and vision for our property has been lost on the city staff who simply do not want to give us the deference we deserve as private property owners and entitled to, under law, to execute our vision. City staff act as though a community center just doesn't fit in an office building because that use does not fit their subjective desires for this site and what they think should be in it. The city staff apparently believes that they are more skilled developers and better judges of how our private property should be used than us, the actual owners of the property. While we actually have the right, as a matter of law, to have the proposed PUD text we filed with the city on July second, two thousand twenty-four, approved, as Nathan told you, we have proposed a solution with minor revisions to what was recommended by the PNZ Commission as a compromise. As you can see, our proposed compromise is not very different than what PNZ approved. Indeed, we are proposing just six revisions to the PNZ Commission version as set forth in Attorney Painter's letter that was provided to Council President Cottone. I think you all have that. As you can see, most of these revisions are minor adjustments that we believe are absolutely critical to the success of the redevelopment of our property, and our team will be happy to discuss each of those six items with you tonight. We've tried to discuss our proposed compromise with the city staff, but they've not been willing to negotiate from the version they redlined before the PNZ Commission meeting. I want to highlight one of the most important revisions on that list, the twenty thousand square foot community center, which constitutes only nine percent of the building, and yet is critical to the success of the development. As you consider this item in particular, I ask that you ask the question why the city staff has been so adamant about denying our community the use of such a small portion of our building for a community center that is supported by the many community leaders you hear today who are representing the rest of our community that we told to stay home. We said, hey, don't everybody come out here. Our proposal is also supported by these four thousand four hundred and twenty-six petitions, which includes over one thousand Hilliard voters. It's supported by the Hilliard business owners who wrote you a letter, in addition to the dozens of letters that I believe are filling your email boxes. There's widespread support for our right to develop our property as we have proposed, including the community center. Why is the city so opposed to us having this community center, this space to gather, to have parties, lectures, Sunday School classes, interfaith activities, and yes, to pray? Why is the city objecting to this simple use when all of the other uses we are bringing in, and in fact, that community center will help us bring in, will generate significantly more income than is being produced now in a dead and dormant building? Why is the city staff sending this community down a road of conflict and division for nine percent of a vacant office building? The unfortunate reality is that we feel we are being treated differently because of who we are, and that any other developer who proposed this project would not have been treated as we have been. Think about that. How would any other developer have been treated had they brought this proposal? What message are you sending the developers who would bring their work to Hilliard if you reject our proposal? Is the city in the business of picking winners and losers, and only certain developers get approval and others don't? Our proposal for our property conforms with the city's Comprehensive Plan. It meets the standards for approval in the zoning code. It will generate tax revenues for the city and provides a community center that is desperately needed. Again, the six revisions to the PNZ-approved version that we have requested are reasonable compromises to a city staff unwilling to sit down and negotiate, and mostly represent minor square footage changes to make certain uses viable, and a community center that has been so adamantly opposed by the city staff, although we still can't understand why they're so against us praying in our own building. I hope you will make the right decision tonight to obey the law, the city's zoning code, and vote for what is best for our community by adopting the compromise that we have proposed so that we can bring life back to this empty building. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Skip Wyler. I guess my legal name's Robert Jerry Wyler, Jr., and I've been asked to come just talk a little bit about the market. I'm in, I guess next year will be my fortieth year in real estate, so in central Ohio. Not that I know a lot, but I've been around for a long time. And we've developed property and do a lot of brokerage. So I represent a lot of buyers and sellers, tenants, landlords. So I'm not going to tell you guys anything you don't know about the office market. They'd love to put a tenant in that office building. It's two hundred and twenty-six thousand square feet. It's a huge building. They'd love to fill that up. There aren't any two hundred and twenty thousand square foot tenants unless it's the state or some, basically, or Amazon. They're not building office buildings. So just being realistic, look at all around two-seventy in Dublin, Hilliard, really, all the way to Westerville. There's so much empty office space, and there's more coming on the market. There's plenty. The vacancy is high, but you don't even know all the leases the big corporations have that they'll be giving back. And so I think that's their first choice would be to fill the whole thing with an office tenant or half of it, but realistically, it's hard to get small tenants, twelve-hundred, five-thousand square foot tenants, and it would take many lifetimes to get those to fill that building up. So I just don't think that's realistic to think you're going to fill that building. And then you talk about the different uses. We have many buildings that we've owned and we've leased where there's educational uses in with office uses. They go fine. There are certain educational uses that you don't want to put in your office building, and that's a market-driven thing. But there are many other educational uses you do want. And so you want schools that operate in alignment with the way you want to operate your building. And so you might not want to have a troubled youth school in the middle of an office building. But there's many other schools and many other schools that we've had in office buildings that you want. And we've had, and we were sad when they left. So to me, that I don't get. You talk about restricting uses on certain floors. I've seen that where it's retail on the first floor, and of course Columbus, we don't do it on the second, but apartments on the second, or you can't do apartments on the first, or you can only do them on the first, you can do them on the first, but you can't do anything above. But I've never seen them anywhere where you say you can only put these uses on certain floors. You can put this office-type use, this educational use. If the school wants the fourth floor, third floor, or second or whatever, why? To me, that should be driven by the bathrooms and the utilities in the building, in the market. And all this really should be driven by the market, is the way I see it. And then, including like religious uses, to me, they have a right to have office and to use space as well. And I know when they went on Wilcox Road, there was a lot of fear in the community and a lot of negativity, and it ended up being great for the community. And whether, forget religion, it's a great economic driver. And so as a business person, it's good for me, and my properties around there, my clients' properties. And so the more vibrant you make this thing, the better it's going to be for me. I do have properties close by, which I just thought of that, but my clients do as well. And so the more vibrant this is, and the more people you have, the better it is. The more people in there, the more income tax. And you look at the income tax, yeah, BMW is awesome, but you only have one. Well, now you did get it, now you're ADS, you guys are on a roll, which is great, but how many acres are they eating up? And look at how much vacant ground is right around us. And True Point is awesome, Equity's awesome, what they do is awesome. But you showed mixed use with retail on the first floor and apartments up above. They're building apartments and office building, and so that's not your true mixed use. And that's the last site over there. There's no site that Mel Run's been built out forever, and there aren't any other sites over there. Over here, you look at, there's a ton of sites. Speaking of which, I don't think it's a retail site. And you guys drive down the road, your shoppers drive down that road. That Kittle's always struggled, and of course furniture, whatever, but Tesla's not retail. And there wouldn't be another car dealer would go there but for being a Tesla dealer, and they only had one, and you'd go to wherever they were, which used to be over on Morse Road. Now they got two, you'll go there, but that's not real retail. And so now you're going to get retail past that? I just, I don't see that of any kind. Apartments, yeah, you go past it, there's big demand. You talk mixed use, it's all driven by apartments. There's huge demand for apartments of any kind. And so that, yes, but you start to go down there, and it's like, what retailer's going to go down there? And the Walmart Center, well, it used to be really nice. It's, I don't think, Castor wouldn't call it one of their best centers. And so, and you go down Tuttle Road, there's no, you look at, there's other land on Tuttle right on the interchange that's not developed. A piece that I've got for sale, and I don't have a whole lot of action on it, but I think one day, eventually, all that'll come on Tuttle as it goes through, but right now, I can't see getting it all the way down Britton Parkway. And then I think that's pretty much, oh, I think, like I said, was, if you want to make it more vibrant, get the people in there. When they lease space to these schools, if they lease it to nonprofits, they still pay real estate taxes. All these people are paying income taxes. We'd all love to have people earning three hundred thousand dollars a year working and building, but that's not realistic. I mean, I guess let's just be real and realistic, and so we can say, no, we're not going to let you do anything, and then nothing's going to happen. It's not going to happen that they're going to fill the building, you guys know that. And so is it going to knock down and be redeveloped and mixed use one day? You know what? Let someone prove me wrong, but I don't see that in my lifetime. So I guess that's all I got to say. If anyone has questions, let me know, but thank you.
Hello, I hate to go after Skip Wyler, but I have no choice. Leaving the worst till the last. My name is Fadi Suliman. I'm speaking here in capacity as a member of the North Islamic Cultural Center, and also as a real estate agent who has been practicing real estate for about twenty years in central Ohio, and who has developed real estate in Columbus and also outside Columbus. I want to speak tonight on two different topics, two different issues. Pretty simple, straight to the point. One is the process that we went through with your staff, and the other is related to the market conditions that Mr. Wyler spoke about. Let's start with what you already know about the market conditions. It's important that the city officials be pragmatic in how they make decisions and keep their fingers on the pulse, especially as it relates to local market conditions, and evolve their strategy accordingly. I think we can all agree to that. As market conditions change, cities, municipalities, and businesses must also change with the market. Many times, these changes are not planned or foreseen, causing businesses and cities to adapt to the market. When industrial and flex buildings became a hot trend in central Ohio, every municipality took notice and started to strategize how to capitalize on this trend. Hilliard was no different and took steps to benefit from that trend. And it has, and as it has approved various flex warehouse buildings in several locations in Hilliard, including areas with premium visibility off I-270. Case in point, Edward Farms and several other flex buildings that are scattered across I-270 in the Hilliard market. And most recently, the 3401 Milran Drive that Hilliard passed as a, with a, with a 10B affiliate. In regard, in regards to that most recent 10B development at 3401, the city has agreed to this project, which will lead to the demolition of the 35,000 square feet office building that sat vacant there for years, for years to accommodate a new flex building. In support of that project, the city has also approved and provided the developer with a 15-year, 75% tax abatement in an effort to attract jobs at a payroll of $55,000 per job. Let's be honest with each other. These are speculative developments in which the city has partnered, quote unquote, partnered with a developer and is taking the risk by providing these incentives in hopes these projects are successful and generate the projected income tax revenue. As with every development, as with every investment, there is a risk. And it's this risk premium that developers and investors make money on. But when government comes in and provides incentive such as here, in the case of 3401 Milran Drive, what in reality happens is that the city subsidizes the developer's risk and shifts that risk to itself to a degree. Why is this development of 3401 Milran Drive, just to call an example, is being treated differently than this application for Britton Parkway Holdings? The applicant here, BPH, has not asked for any tax incentives or grants. The applicant, the purposing of a building will lead to payroll income per job more than any other recently approved warehouse office development. And just the private school alone, conservatively, conservatively speaking, will have a payroll income of $40,000 per job without the benefit of any income tax incentives. That, that's not accounting for any income from any other office uses or other ancillary uses to the building. Let's pivot to the conditions of the local market and building on what Mr. Skip Wyler spoke about. Just to get a little bit more specific. The Hilliard on Dublin Submarket has about 3.3 million square feet of office space as of today's report, which I ran on CoStar. And there's other large blocks of office space that will be coming to the market. And you guys all know the 400, 446,000 square feet Verizon building just down the road. Most of which is vacant. And I've been told that the South Tower of 200 some thousand square feet will be coming online soon. The average office space lease size, the lease size of an average office space in central Ohio for the first half of 2024 has been a whopping 6,840 square feet. Basically, that's the most office space that's leasing, 6,840 square feet. According to the Business First publication on October 25th, 2024. It's clear that this building competes with many other properties in central Ohio. And specifically the Northwest I-270 corridor, including the Dublin Submarket, which has equally prominent buildings of I-270 with equal or better amenities. Let me also state, for CoStar, based on CoStar's data, if you take a mile radius of about 15 miles from Britton Parkway, there is 5.7 million square feet of office space. Most of which starts at 50,000 square feet floor plates. 50,000 per floor plate. That's 5.7 million square feet sitting empty as of today. According to the recent publications in the Business First, and I quote, "There are nearly 3 million square feet of office conversions underway in central Ohio. Part of a growing national trend to stem losses from post pandemic work from home policies." CBRE Columbus Office recently released a report that found 1.1 million square feet of office space currently is being converted and an additional 1.7 million square feet is being planned for conversion. 57% of these conversions are turning office space into mixed use. 22% are turning office space into educational use. Case in point, Heart of Ohio Classical Academy, which has recently purchased a 165,000 square feet of Lakehurst Drive and converted it into a school. Regarding the process, it was obvious from our initial meetings with the staff and the city that they would not be collaborating in good faith. And I hate to say this. Any representation by staff or the administration that they were bargaining in good faith is nothing more than self-service. In our first meeting, a member of your staff said clearly, and I quote, "We will, we would be willing to wait for five more years until the office market comes back." Keep in mind, this building has been vacant since March 23. And everybody knows, the city was aware that BMW is vacating much earlier than that. So you can practically say this building has been, been empty or will be empty a cumulative of four to five years and is still sitting empty. You drive by it, you look at it and you wonder why. Furthermore, one of your staff members said, "We do not want a school here." And when asked why, the answer was, "Because payroll taxes." And I can paraphrase, maybe payroll taxes, maybe it doesn't pay high paying jobs for schools. We know that. These are not high tech paying jobs. So I ask you, how is a teacher's salary of 40 to $50,000 compared to the salary of the warehouse employee in projects that you, the city, is approving up and down I-270? Is the warehouse employee's salary $40,000 or some of them are actually less? More or less better than the teachers in this proposed school? It was at that meeting that Mr. Painter here first advised the city that it should not treat us any differently than any building owner. These teacher salaries are in line, if not more, than more, than many of these recently approved and tax incentivized projects that the city has recently approved. This simply shows, and I hate to say it, it's not me to say this, a level of hypocrisy and an unequal treatment. Let me also be clear. There was little to no compromise with city staff. Any changes made to our text were done at the city's own and independent voliation and without our input. Look at the exchange in emails between Mr. Painter and Mr. Talantino on August 8. Mr. Painter reached out to discuss potential compromise and Mr. Talantino shot an email back stating, "Additional discussions will not change the city's position. Not a way to treat residents of the city of Hilliard. Not a way to treat residents who actually want to do something better in an empty building." That's sad. Let me also be clear. The applicant here, we are 100% committed to making this project successful. And is very much open and willing to talk to any office users that any one of you know to lease office space from one inch to 100,000 square feet or more. Understanding that, city has known already about this building going vacant years ahead. And Mr. and Mrs. Cordell, sorry to say, but you referencing the building was empty for a year. It's been more than a year. You guys were well aware that it was going empty much earlier than March 2023. And those efforts by the city, the ownership, the brokerage, were in no veil to lease one inch of that building. We are open and committed to entertaining office users who come and lease office space. If an office user is interested in leasing 10,000 or 100,000 square feet, we would absolutely and without hesitation, work with them as long as the economics make sense. At the end of the day, as Dr. Abaza mentioned, this is a financial transaction. And we will work with any tenant to maximize the revenue from this investment. Let me be clear, lastly. Contrary to some of the perceptions or beliefs that you may have or rumors you may have heard, there is no intent, absolutely, to exclusively lease space here just to members of the NOR community. Let that be clear. This building is open to be leased to any person or company from any background. We make no exceptions. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, members of council. I'm Joe Miller of the Voorhees Law Firm. I'm a partner and the head of the litigation group. I've litigated land use and zoning cases in central Ohio for more than 25 years. I want to thank you for your patience and listening as I bring our applicant's presentation to the close. Obviously, there are a tremendous number of concerned and interested citizens here. And I appreciate you listening closely to the applicant's presentation. You have been told this evening all the reasons why this is a very good and a very worthy development. It will generate substantial tax revenue. It does conform to the city's code. And it does fulfill the objectives of the city's comprehensive plan. While Mr. Talantino brushed over it, in fact, as proposed, this is a mixed use neighborhood center. Exactly what this community and this council said in the comprehensive plan that it wanted for that site. Furthermore, you have Skip Wyler with over 40 years of real estate development experience in this region telling you, this proposal by this applicant aligns very well with the comprehensive plan and will foster activity on this site. Mr. Wyler also tells you that what city staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission have recommended to you, in fact, instead is financially infeasible. This should be approved as proposed. This development should be approved as proposed by the applicant. It is what is good for this property, the surrounding area and the city as a whole. The NOR Islamic Community Center has tried to partner with the city. While city manager Crandall took issue that they did not come and talk to the city prior to their purchase, there of course is no requirement that they do so. What they have done since then is absolutely try to accommodate any of the city's legitimate concerns. And those efforts have been rebuffed. If you deny this application tonight, or if you prove staff's new and reinvented development, what staff would like to see on this site, rather than what the private property owner actually wants, rather than what city code actually otherwise allows, and rather what, rather than what the actual real estate market will bear, then you as members of council will be needlessly subjecting this city, your constituents and its taxpayers to liability for substantial damages and attorney's fees. Federal civil rights laws exist for situations just such as this. 42 United States Code, Section 1983 protects property owners from arbitrary and unreasonable zoning decisions. Those decisions are a violation of a property owner's right of due process. Those civil rights laws also protect property owners from unequal treatment under the law. To treat any landowner differently from similarly situated landowners is illegal. And I will guarantee you that is what is happening here. When city, city staff, for the first time ever in this city, is seeking to dictate what may be permitted on each and every floor of a particular building. Mr. Talantino himself earlier tonight called these uncharted waters for us. They're uncharted waters, what they're subjecting this applicant to. Despite the fact that the applicant has only proposed permitted uses under the city's code in keeping with that comprehensive plan, that's a violation of the Equal Protection Clause. Likewise, the First Amendment protects the free expression of religion, which the staff with its recommendations to you tonight is explicitly asking you to reject space for worship and prayer, though permitted in a PUD zoned area. And finally, the Federal Religious Land Use Act, ARLUPA. It protects religious institutions such as the property owner here from burdensome or discriminatory zoning practices. As I said, I've been doing this for 20 some years. I have never seen a staff report and a planning commission recommendation like this, where the city is playing developer, picking and choosing floor by floor what should be allowed, regardless of how it works in the building, regardless of construction, regardless of layout, and insisting blindly upon office uses that are dead post pandemic, even though all of the uses sought by this applicant, including that prayer center, are actually fully permitted under your code. Again, to do anything other than accept this applicant's proposal needlessly exposes the city to damages, to attorney's fees under those federal laws meant to protect people such as this. You can spare the city that. You can spare its citizens and its taxpayers that. It was referenced earlier tonight that this building is one of the front doors to Hilliard. Well, I can tell you that these taxpayers, these citizens and these constituents feel as though throughout this process, that door has been closed to them because of who they are and how they worship. Mr. Painter sent to you yesterday a very modest proposal to resolve this. Six concessions by the city that are fully permitted under the code and should have been approved and recommended by staff in the Planning Zoning Commission. Six modest concessions that would resolve this. You should approve that tonight and let the NOR Islamic Cultural Center continue to thrive in your community benefiting everyone. Thank you.
Okay, we're ready for public comments. We have signed up Bob Zust. Bob, when you approach, once you reach the podium, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Bob Zust, 3371 Pat Conway in Hilliard. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Excuse me, you have three minutes. I'm sorry, I forgot.
I live and work here in Hilliard. I've lived in Darby Glen for over 20 years. I've raised four children here and have seen lots of development in that time. I served as president of the Darby Glen Civic Association for a few years and worked with the city on several issues during that time. I come tonight to express disappointment with the city leaders on the rejection of the proposal for the old BMW building and ask for the approval tonight of the changes to the planned unit development. As a resident, I do not want to see vacant buildings. This building has sat vacant for quite a while now, as Mr. Suliman alluded to. We now have a well-respected and well-represented local faith community that wants to take on this empty building and use it for the betterment of the citizens of our city and the surrounding areas. It would be a central point for their community and help develop children and adults, as well as host events that would draw visitors to surrounding shops, restaurants and hotels. If anyone thinks, I'm not, I'm not a real estate person. If anyone thinks, I'm not a, I'm not a real estate person, but if anyone thinks that these office buildings are going to, again, draw in large companies to fill them with office employees, you're delusional. Forget your green, your tall green graph. It's not going to happen. Just take a peek around the corner of 270. Even our big brother Dublin had trouble doing that. Dublin schools had to put a campus in a similar building. Just three spots down from here, we're going to have the same issue with Verizon, and we're going to watch you. We have someone willing to take on this building for a good cause. Let them do it. I appreciate the community plan, I really do, but city manager Crandall, city manager Crandall's pointing to tax generation and mixed-use development on prime 270 frontage falls flat, when just one plot down from here, you allowed a giant Amazon data center to be built. And I might add that you also sold out to Amazon near my neighborhood on another large property facing 270. You allowed them to fill in what was probably the largest body of water in Hilliard, in Blatts Lake. I now see data center buildings out my front window instead of trees and to put up with the endless construction noise and traffic and even the dreaded data hum. Based on these decisions, I urge you to do the right thing and let this organization, these friends and community members, proceed with their plans for the building. They've already showed more than enough good faith with the city with the concessions that they have made. In 10 seconds, I'd just like to say, Mr. Suleman, even if it was all Muslim businesses in this building, I'd be happy to welcome that, and the city should do that too.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Next, Muhanad, I'm sorry, I'm going to mess this up. Muhanad Abu Laban?
Abu Laban.
Abu Laban, thank you very much. Please state your name and address. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Abu Laban. Good evening. My name is Muhanad Abu Laban, 4340 Lyman Drive in Hilliard. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. Mine is going to be short and straight to the point. I am here as a business owner in the city of Hilliard for the last 18 years to express my strong support for the change-of-use application for NOR Ohio Community Center at the new building located at 5550 Britton Parkway. As a local business owner who contributes to the city economic strength, I believe that the approval of this application is essential to promote a vibrant and inclusive community that benefit all residents. With Hilliard's growing population, including a significant increase in the Muslim community, the proposed change of use and convert a large vacant office building to a busy and vibrant mixed-use facility that includes many businesses with only 10% of the building designated for nonprofit use will help support this growth. I envision the proposed mixed, mixed uses will improve the economic perspective of such a large facility by increasing commercial interest in the facility due to the increased number of site visits associated with the community center use. The NOR Ohio Center serves as a multipurpose community center, offering a variety of educational programs, cultural events, and community activities. The center will benefit all of Ohio, all of Hilliard by creating jobs, attracting small businesses, and drawing visitors to the city, further contributing to the city development and economic strength. I respectfully urge the city council to approve this proposal, as it aligns with the Hilliard vision of sustainable growth and will bring lasting benefits to both residents and businesses. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next, we have Justin Wood. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you so much. Justin Wood, 1887 Seaspray Drive in Galloway, though I did work at that empty Verizon building for almost 15 years, and thank you for the opportunity to speak in support of the NOR Ohio Community Center. As a longtime member of this community, I've seen firsthand and would like to introduce the positive impacts of our community on Hilliard and to introduce that to you as well. Our gatherings and events have consistently brought neighbors together, fostered understanding, and created bonds that make Hilliard stronger. From our annual teacher appreciation dinner, which honors outstanding educators from Hilliard and surrounding districts, to our monthly food drive, where we serve neighbors regardless of faith, from the NOR Free Clinic, which serves the underinsured and uninsured, to mental health awareness and training for our leaders and youth, and yes, a spiritual hub for the doctors, dentists, lawyers, accountants, engineers, business owners, teachers, students, homemakers, and professionals who contribute positively to Hilliard every day and who fill this space today in solidarity. NOR, meaning light, has been just that for Hilliard. But as our community grows, so does our need for a space that can continue to serve and uplift residents from all backgrounds. The NOR Ohio Project will be a tremendous resource for Hilliard. Not only will it meet our community needs, but it will stimulate local economic growth. Its community center component allows it to host educational programs, cultural events, and activities that celebrate Hilliard's diversity. It will be a place where people come together, learn from one another, and create connections that build a more inclusive community. Approving this center would mean more than just reviving an empty building in Hilliard. It would be a commitment to a vibrant, welcoming, and diverse city, and it will be a statement that we are welcome here as well. Thank you for considering this proposal. The NOR community has a track record of success, and the NOR Ohio Community Center has the potential to be a transformational asset for the NOR community and for Hilliard, and we urge your support in helping us bring this vision to life. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Khalid Turani. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Thank you. My name is Khalid Turani. My address is 4607 Avapoint, Hilliard. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. As the Executive Director of Council on American Islamic Relations in Ohio, CARE Ohio, as you know, CARE is the largest civil rights organization for Muslims in the United States. I'm here on behalf of our Muslim community, but more importantly, as part of the larger fabric of our city. I'm here to advocating for a project that will strengthen the bonds we share, a new multipurpose community center that is part of the application for change of use for 5050 Britton Parkway in Hilliard. For decades, our city has been a welcome place for people from all walks of life, faiths, backgrounds. But we know that living side by side is only part of the journey. The real challenge and the real opportunity lies in coming together, building bridges, and learning from one another. The purpose of the community center would be a safe, welcoming space for Muslim neighbors and also for the entire community. We envision a center where the, where people of all faith can come together, where interfaith dialogues can take place, where local organizations can hold workshops, and where community members can find a place to engage in open conversation, a place not just for Muslims, but for our partnership and progress. I urge you to approve this application and allow this center to be not only a building and a community center, but also a bridge that we can cross and come together as a community. Thank you very much.
Next person is Brandon Ross. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Brandon Ross. Address, 3544 Green Island Court. On April 22nd, the city of Hilliard approved a resolution to show empathy and support for the Muslim community. Keyword, "support." A month prior to, a month prior to current, and now roughly seven months, Hilliard City is sitting idle in fighting the Muslim community on zoning requests for the BMW building that was purchased by the NOR. I completely understand the difference between the two issues, but where did the support go for the Muslim community? Where'd it go? From my understanding, there was a past discussions that were positive about the BMW building being used by Hilliard City School District, and there seemed to be no issues with zoning if this project was greenlighted. So there was support for a public entity, but no support for a private entity? A lot of amazing things for the city of Hilliard can come from the NOR Ohio Community Center, such as local economic growth, serving the community, the Muslim community, educationally and culturally from the nonprofit sector of this project, strengthen and maintain other commercial enterprises, creating job opportunities, and possibly attracting other small businesses to be part of the Hilliard community. The last five years of being active in Hilliard has been very enlightening for me. Some of this enlightenment has been good and some bad. The good is seeing how much of a melting pot Hilliard is. The bad is the inappropriate and waste-of-time politics. To close, I am in full support, again, keyword, "support," of the developments of the NOR Ohio Community Center, and I ask you to approve their project. Thank you for your time.
Do we have some other people that are not signed in that want to speak? Please come forward. State your names, excuse me, state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Dr. Sumaya Hamadmud. I used to live in 509 Truman Craft Drive, Hilliard, until the Amazon, ugly Amazon building popped up, so I had to move because it was an eyesore in the Britton Parkway. So now I live in Dublin, but my kids still attend Hilliard schools. I am here to tell you my personal story. I moved from Connecticut 13 years ago because of NOR Islamic Cultural Center. I was attracted to NOR because of the opportunity that it provides to my kids, and I know tens, if not hundreds, or 1,000 people who came to Hilliard for that same reason. Those are professionals, faculty members, oh, by the way, I'm an OSU faculty, research faculty member, so I know faculty members, business owners, employers, healthcare professionals. We have lots of healthcare professionals in the community who are part of the NOR community. So NOR not only drawn those people, they helped everyone integrate and contribute positively to the larger community through outreach program, interfaith initiatives, Make Hilliard Beautiful. Actually, my youth group did participate in that many times, so thank you for that. Through training of public school teachers and through supporting Issue 39 recently, actually NOR did rally up the whole community to support our public school. So that's only one example of how NOR contribution to the larger community is. So I'm here today to tell you, this is your chance, this is your opportunity, to show NOR community, your constituents, as leaders, as elected officials, that you are here to empower them, to lift them up, because that's what leaders do, to help them grow through supporting their institution, because when you support NOR, you're supporting the larger community. Thank you.
All right, could you state your name and address for the record, please? You have three minutes.
My name is Dr. Malik Ahak. I am a resident in Columbus, Ohio, since 1970. I'm one of the oldest Muslims to come to, come to Ohio and, and really start the Muslim Foundation in central Ohio. The first mosque was built by some of the Muslim, the earliest Muslims, there were like eight families to start with, and I, me and my husband and several, about eight or 10 families together built the first mosque on East Broad Street. And from that, we thought we got the biggest mosque, but then later on, we realized it was too small, and we kept moving and moving. It has been a wonderful experience to see our community grow, our constituents grow, and we are so grateful to everyone who has helped us grow. I'm a pediatrician. I'm a professor of pediatrics at Nationwide Children's Hospital at Ohio State University College of Medicine, and my world are children. My world are children. I want to share with you some of the facts about children. Children learn what they live. If children learn acceptance by, not just by the family and the parents, but by the outside wall, they are thrilled, and they will be better citizens and do a lot of good in this world. When our children hear that you members here tonight have approved our, our efforts in acquiring and letting the building, the NOR Ohio building, function to its optimum potential, they will be thrilled. They will do a lot of good in this world. Psychologically, if they hear that it was denied and this building is standing alone by itself, not generating income and not helping other people. So therefore, my plea to you is to please listen and accept the proposal and help us grow. These are our future leaders, our children of future leaders. They could become a president of the United States. They, they dream, they have dreamers. Any case, my request to you today is this. We are here and the whole, not just the Muslims, but all the people who care for us, and really requesting you to accept the proposal and make us function to the best potential. You will help them grow, not just economically, but also emotionally, and you will be amazed. You have to come and visit us when we are functioning there. We welcome you with open arms and will do the best to make this country, this city grow. Thank you very much.
Hi, please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Allison Saney, 5023. Allison Saney, 5023 Silver Saddle Court, Hilliard, Ohio, 43016. I have the privilege to move to this country in 1999. I started my career in Unseco Rhode Island. I was moved to Halliston, Massachusetts, and then from there, I went to Memphis, Tennessee. From Memphis, Tennessee, I went to Pensville, Ohio. From Pensville, Ohio, I went to Greenville, South Carolina. From Greenville, South Carolina, I went to Valdosta, Georgia. From Valdosta, Georgia, I was sent to Mississauga, Canada, and then back in 2012, I landed in Columbus, Ohio. And I said to my family, after we discovered NOR and the community, we are not going anywhere. This is it. And you know why? And the reason is, I have found the best community that I can ever dream of, and that's the NOR Islamic community. We have a city of Hilliard that is supporting us in any ways you can think of. So today, I am asking you to please not kill that dream that I have and my family had. We have been in many states, even outside of the country, because of my work. My degree is in logistics and supply chain management. My graduate degree is from Cleveland State University, and I have been moving around the country like crazy. Again, once we made it to here and I discover what was NOR, I discover what was this community, I said to my family, we are not going anywhere. It cost me resigning from my position, creating my own business, so that I don't move away from this community. So please, for the sake of God, I am asking you to allow us to do what we would like to have in this building. Everything else has been approved. We would like to have a prayer area where we can go and worship our Lord, the Lord that you guys believe in, the Lord we believe in, and the Lord we share. Please help us.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to speak tonight? Is there anyone else who wants to speak tonight? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Journey Weaver. I live at 8934 Landview Drive. 8934 Landview Drive. I didn't know I was coming here tonight. I'm a service technician. I was in a school in Troy, Ohio. But I came here in support of our community. I'm just a regular American citizen, about 45 years old. I'm a United States Marine Corps combat veteran. So if anybody had ever faced something like Islamophobia or whatever at a time in their life, it was me. And I believed in fighting for my country so much, I went back a second time in the U.S. Army Airborne Infantry after 9/11. And I've been through things you guys can't imagine. And I'm a proud father of an autistic son who's 13 years old. You know, I've always been a kind person. I grew up in a broken home. My mom was murdered when I was nine. I didn't have a lot. That's also why I joined the military to make a difference for all of us, to fight for our country and make it a better place to live. I had studied rigorously in Catholic theology my whole life, and I was on a theological level to become a pastor. But it wasn't until the things that I learned in the war, it wasn't until the things of all the different people that I met are Muslim, I learned, I speak 16 languages now because I care about reaching out to other people. I was born and raised here, so I know this country inside out, and I loved it enough that I would lay my life down for my friends and for my family and for the honor of this great nation. And so my 13-year-old son, he's autistic, and around the same time, almost two years ago, he had a big, a large tumor on his lungs, and we thought he was going to pass away from child cancer. At the same time, I had it on my gallbladder, and I was going to die of gallbladder cancer. So being a pastor was out. I traveled everywhere, every church, every masjid, every mosque, everywhere I could to try to get help because I thought we were both going to leave this world, and I wanted answers. Why did all this happen? And I found the Islamic center of Greater Cincinnati, who had told me about this NOR masjid and caused me to move out here, and we prayed, and we prayed, we took the Shahada, we became Muslim. We've been Muslim for about a year now. And I never believed in anything so much in my life and never had so much support from any human being in my entire life, any human beings than my fellow Muslim brothers and sisters. And we prayed, we had support. The tumor was gone during his surgery, my son, and mine. They removed my gallbladder, and I'm cancer-free, and I'm able to live. So I came here tonight. I got post-traumatic stress disorder from the combat job, and I can't speak in front of people, but I wanted to have the courage to come up here and make a difference, make a statement. Otherwise, why would I have laid my life down in the Middle East? Why would I do anything if I didn't believe in it? And I did that for all of you and for all of them. And you would think that I would be Islamophobic or something because of being in the combat. A United States Marine of all things, and these people showed me more love and respect than anyone in my entire life. And that changed my heart and moved me, just as I plan to move, this council tonight to approve the application. God bless you all.
Is there anyone else here? Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Catherine Davis, 5484 Skeeter Springs, Columbus. My name is Catherine Davis, and I am a science educator from the Science Center in Columbus. As a community science institution, we act as a bridge between STEM giants like Honda, Bantel, and Intel, and central Ohio school districts preparing students for future careers in these companies. As central Ohio booms in this new industry coming in, there's a widening gap between industries' need for skilled STEM workers and the number of students coming out of high school and college with the needed skills and degrees. School districts strive hard to supply their students with the knowledge and skill needed, but the lack of time and resources make it difficult and necessary to lean on community STEM-focused organizations to fill that space. It takes a network of community organizations to serve the level of need that we have. Having a STEM education center in Hilliard will make Hilliard a much more competitive community for these jobs coming in. I appreciate that there is people in this community that want to contribute and want the success of our youth and the industries for our future. Please accept this.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wants to speak? Okay. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Ayman Abana, 5169 Venings Grove. I came here actually from different perspective. Being as architecture design, I came to this room a few times, and I worked closely with the zoning department for several jobs. One of the first jobs I did in this country was for Sunrise Academy. We worked closely with Mr. Tarantino a few times, and he was very supportive. He gave us a few options to make it work, and when it comes to this room, never let us down. So we still expect that you guys help us do this. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wants to speak?
This is my second time. You all know me. I've been here quite a few times. So, Madam President, the council members, I would like to, I'm a member of NOR. I am a Muslim, which I didn't introduce myself before when I sent the proposal to you. This is my core masjid that I attend. These are all my fellow members, and I support them 100% in this effort. I've been here like 10 years. As I stated before to the council, all this at one time was cornfields. I'm a Columbus guy, okay? From the south side of Columbus, Lincolnhausen. I pick corn, beans, spring beans, tomatoes, cubes. The farmers would pick us up at 5:00 in the morning and bring us here. Where that masjid is at now, I pick tomatoes there. Okay, so I got a long history of Columbus, and this is a place where I found refuge. I moved from Maine here in 2016, I think it was. I came back, and the first, my first stop was El NOR. This is my mom here. My first stop was El NOR, and I've been there ever since as a member. And this should be approved. This should be approved. I think that they have did a lot for the community that I have participated in, and I've seen the work that they do over the years. And I can only say, approve it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? One, two more people? Okay, come on. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
My name is Orey Marvel. I live at 4995 Hilliard Oaks Court, Hilliard 43026. I just wanted to say that I moved here to Columbus in 2004, right before NOR Masjid was fully built and open, and we moved here because of this masjid. I have raised six children here. I have taught the children in our community at NOR Masjid, and Hilliard itself has become like a cradle. It is a cradle. I have sent my children to Hilliard City Schools. I have homeschooled here. I have nurtured my families, my own family and my neighbors' families here in Hilliard. And I feel like if you approve this project, you will increase Hilliard's ability to be a cradle, where people can grow and be who they want to be. My children have been able to do that by being here in Hilliard, and the NOR community has worked really, really hard to make the Hilliard, I mean, the Masjid has worked really hard to be an outreach type of organization where it has tried to bring in everybody and to participate in being that cradle to help people grow. So approving this project will increase Hilliard's ability to be a cradle to help people grow, and I hope that you will approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Hafiz Mohammed. I live in 5040 Aspen Pan Boulevard, Dublin, Ohio. Thank you very much, everyone, for taking time out. I know it's been like a long time, more than two hours. Thank you very much for your service. I'm a bridge design engineer, so is glad to be one of those different people in the houses, in the house, a lot of the doctors and then businessmen, real estate people. I migrated to the United States like 12 years back. I landed in Akron. I didn't like Ohio because it was snowing a lot at the time. The place I come from, India, doesn't snow at all. I hated it in the first place, and then I fell in love with Ohio after some time, and then I'm stuck in now Columbus. So I do a lot of bridge designs and then inspections and then also construction inspection. Recently, we opened Straight Route 161. If you drive by New Albany, that was a project I was involved with. So I would like to say one thing is that if we don't have a lot of bridge engineers. So one of the things I'm passionate about is teaching our kids to take up the bridge engineering and the roadway engineering so that they can go and then become the professionals in the future. I became a volunteer with this Islamic organization eight years back, and then I'm still part of it, and then I'm proud of being a volunteer here. When my parents passed away, I couldn't go back to India. So this is my family. They stood by me. When my daughter was born, when my daughter was born, she was born in COVID. There was no one to support us. My family couldn't come back, couldn't come to the United States. My in-laws couldn't come to support. These are the people who stood by me for more than two months. They supported everything for me. You all know Wilcox is getting blocked because of the, the community has grown up a lot after the COVID. Post-2019, we have gone, we have increased a lot in number. All we are asking is allow us to use the space for, to use it as a religious space. We want to use it for Friday also during the Ramadan. So we want more community members to come and then pray there. I am very confident that all the council members will be very benevolent today, and they will approve our project. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Hello, my name is Javia Heather. I live at 3901 Buckskin Court, 43221. I am a senior here at Hilliard Davidson High School. I have gone to Hilliard Davidson and to Hilliard. I've been in Hilliard schools for as long as I've lived in Columbus, since the third grade. I am the president of my high school's art club. I'm a costume editor for my high school's theater. I am a member of my impact committee here at the mosque, and I am proud to say I am one of the very few students here in this state who gets to say that my high school gets Eve off. I mean, that's crazy, isn't it? I am so grateful to get to be part of Hilliard as a community. I sometimes think I am from nowhere if I'm not from Hilliard. I've lived in Canada, I've lived in Montreal, I've lived in Connecticut, my family is from Pakistan. I have lived over the majority of my life right here in Hilliard. And looking around in my life, I am surrounded by doctors and engineers and lawyers and social workers and artists and teachers and wonderful people. And all these people around me, they all have two things in common, right? They are Muslim, and they are from Hilliard, Ohio. They are proud to say they are from Hilliard, Ohio, and they are proud to say that they are attendants and they are members of the NOR Islamic Cultural Center. Our community is constantly growing. I see it every day, and I see the young people around me, and I see them talk about how they can't wait to go off to college and become teachers and become lawyers and become doctors and become nurses and become artists and become writers and become members of a larger world. But what I also see is their love for Hilliard, Hilliard, Ohio. They are nothing, they are Muslims, they are Bosnian, they are Syrian, they are Palestinian, they are Arab, they are African, they're Somali, and they're Syrian, they're Pakistani. They are so many things, but they are also from right here, from Hilliard, Ohio, and they are proud to say they're from Hilliard, Ohio. And for that reason, I am asking the Hilliard City Council to look at their young people and look at their parents who are choosing to start families here, and look at their elderly who are hoping to age in place right here in Hilliard, and I hope you can look at these people, your constituency, your constituents, your voters, your taxpayers, and I hope you can look to them and say, I want you to stay here, I want you to give back to our community, the community that you belong to here in Hilliard, Ohio. For those reasons, I would be honored for you, council members, to accept this resolution to expand our incredible, vibrant, and growing community right here in Hilliard, Ohio, and accept this resolution. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wants to speak? Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
This is Dr. Navid Ashwag. Thank you very much for allowing us, this, my name is Navid Ashwag. I'm a nephrologist from Ohio State University Hospital. Let me just give you a brief background that I moved here from the Harvard University from Boston. I spent three and a half years over there, and I came here for my fellowship, and my plan was to run away after two years when I came here and visited the, Columbus. Here I am, just because of this NOR Islamic Center. As I said that I'm a nephrologist, and I'm very sorry, I'm going to say some strong statement here. My bread and butter is the blood, okay? I clean blood, and I have a fellow nephrologist sitting over there, and he understands what I mean. We do dialysis, we clean the blood. I have not seen any difference between Hindi, Islamic blood, Jewish blood, or Christian blood. Okay? This is what, so I would definitely, definitely urge you guys, and I know that you will make a very good decision, that please do not make your decision on the basis of faith. Thank you very much.
Please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Ronnie Abaza, 801 Bell Memorial Court. I just want to ask the members of our community, thank you so much for coming here tonight. I'm just going to ask you, please, that we not have any more public comments, if you're agreeable. You have a right to. I can't stop you. None of us can stop you. You have a right, but just asking you, please, I think the message is loud and clear to the city council, so just for the sake of not the evening going on too long, thank you for all those who spoke and came here tonight, and we'll leave it up to them to deliberate. Thank you.
Thank you.
President Gattone and members of council, just to wrap this up, I just want, just some housekeeping items here. One, I need to ensure that council accepts all material referenced by myself and other attorneys and presenters here tonight into the record and preserve the sign-in sheets. My clients didn't know this, but I'm going to, I'm going to take off my attorney hat and put on my, my resident hat. I've been in this room long enough and have gone over enough blood and controversies and whatnot. I've been here long enough for Mr. Carrier to sue me three times. We had, when I was first on council, we had the comprehensive plan that was in place, and we learned really, really quickly that if we adhere to the letter of that law, to letter of that plan, that we would not have many of the things that you guys are now able to capitalize on. We have not had Harris Preserve, we have not had the Grinner Site, the Bo Jackson Facility. We worked with the schools to flip that and have soccer fields that you've now turned to the Amazon and the well. If you adhere with no, with no ability to adapt to that comprehensive plan, you will kill this city. You will not have what we have. You will, you'll take us backwards. Telling you, it's just as sure as day it is. The other thing that we noticed when I was on council is that all these projects were from people outside the community. It was Roar, it was the guys who did the Harris Preserve, it was Amazon. Now you have a homegrown community here in Hilliard, here in investors, trying to do a damn good thing, and this city administration is now taking a new comp plan and weaponizing it against its own residents. That cannot stand. That is not what it's here for. I know many of you, I know a lot of you. You are all good people. I know you'll do the right thing. And to do the right thing is a grant what these guys will want to do. When I left council, we were working, and I can't remember what we call it, to provide equal rights to many members, many underprivileged members of our community. And what I feel tonight, and what I have felt going through this process, is that this city has taken a step backwards, and I'm ashamed of it. Do these people the right thing. They have fought hard, they have put the time and effort into it, they have paid a lot of money, and they want to be here to do the right thing, and they're going to do the right thing. I'm more sure of this than any other project that I've ever been involved in the city of Hilliard. of Hilliard. I'll, I'll bet my reputation on it. They will not let me down and they will not let you down. Finally, as a matter of federal state in this city's own law, this council should permit the applicant to use his property in the manner that BPH, BPH has applied for. There is no legitimate basis to impose the restrictions staff and P and Z has recommended, including the thousand, we including the thousands of resident, residents who support the applicant's request, urge this council to approve the application consistent with the terms I provided you in my November 11th letter. Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Law Director Boggs.
Thank you, President Katoen. Just to kind of re-center things for the council this evening, the legislative action before you is Resolution 24-R-88, just for reference, that starts at page 209 of the PDF packet. That resolution, if, if adopted, would approve the application of the applicant with the conditions recommended by your Planning and Zoning Commission and staff at September's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. A no vote would leave the current development text unchanged with the sole current entitled use as office use. Four affirmative votes from the council are required for this resolution to pass.
All right. Does council have any comments, questions? Cynthia?
Thank you, President Katoen. I do thank everyone for coming tonight. I know it's been a long evening and it's a very important topic that we're here discussing. I have a couple of questions on the six specific things that Mr. Painter has in his letter. The, number three, that public or private school shall be permitted use. If it's a permitted use, it would still go before P and Z, correct, for the particulars of the school? Is that right?
It would not. It would not. A permitted use has the ability to build or operate by right without further planning and zoning commission review.
So are there like square footage? Can I ask Mr. Painter about that?
What's, what's a specific?
Um, all right. So you're requesting that the school should be a permitted use. And in another place, it says it shall not exceed 20% of the building's square footage? Is, is that correct?
Yes.
So would that be part of point number three to add that in?
It, it could, it'd be permitted use up to, to have 20, 20% of the building's square footage to be for a public or private school. We separate out the issues from the usage, from the use and, and the square footage limitations that the city unilaterally put in place. That's why we, that's why I wrote it that way to kind of have those separated out. I'm sorry. Thank you.
Oh, okay. But the intention is not to exceed 20% of this square footage?
Correct.
Okay. And then the, I thought I read somewhere that there was a maximum on the fleet vehicles, but I don't see that listed on number six.
Um, it wasn't a maximum on the number of fleet vehicles. It was, or the usage, it was, we couldn't have them parked overnight and whatever, which makes no sense within today's, in today's economy with having, with having, you know, delivery services and whatnot be a main part of a restaurant's driver. We were just asking to, to allow those cars to be onsite and parked overnight, provided that, you know, they're, they're clean, they're parked off, you know, parked off, you know, whatever, off to the side, so to speak. But if you think about it with DoorDash and whatnot, to sit there, for the city to sit there and say you can't have those types of vehicles on the site, well, you've just taken out, you know, how 50% of the population now gets their food.
But isn't DoorDash's private vehicles, no?
Yeah, but I mean, it's still to have vehicles they can deliver and whatnot. I mean, they're, they're going to be in the delivery business themselves.
So I'm not familiar with the restaurant business, but do most restaurants have more than one large fleet vehicle?
Yeah, I think, I think it's dependent upon who the, who the user is, but they'll need, at least need some fleet cars available to, to service their customers and bring food, food items onsite and whatnot. And we're okay with a limit of two, two fleet vehicles per user, not more than eight total for parking during non-operational hours.
Okay. That's what I had read.
Yes, yep.
So a maximum of eight. I also wanted to state that I have gone around and around on this in, in my mind for months. I mean, I understand it's a very serious consideration for the city, you know, to maximize our tax dollars, but I also realize that community wealth is not just measured in dollars. It's measured in actually, it's, it's measured in what we do for our people. And this is important, I think, for our city to be, we say we're welcoming and, and I think that we, we need to consider this as one of the ways that we welcome our, our communities. I don't believe that Dr. Abaza wants to drive this to, into the ground without making money. I think he'd like to make some money on this project. And, and I think that there will be users out there who, who will be able to lease space in this building and bring in tax dollars for the rest of the community. So having said that, I would like to amend, if, if I may.
You, you want to make a motion?
Yes.
Amen?
Yes. I would like to amend the motion.
Need a second?
Well, well, I haven't said what I'm amending.
Right.
Okay. So one, that the prescribed assignments from the Planning and Zoning Commission and limitations on uses on a floor-by-floor basis be removed. Number two, that a community center allowing various religious activities in addition to those activities, commencement with a community center be treated as a permitted use, recognizing that the gross floor area of the community center will not exceed 10% of the building's square footage, which is approximately 20,000 square feet. Number three, are, are you guys flexible on keeping the schools as a conditionally use only because we do not have any specific information at this time, but knowing that it could be allowed up to 20,000 square feet? Or, yeah, was it 20,000 or 20% anyway, one of those?
20%. The client would be agreeable to making that a conditional use provided it's, what, what conditions? I assume it's the conditional provision set forth in the ordinance to meet those standards?
Um, yes, I would assume.
Yes. I mean, that's what it'd be. I mean, there's conditional uses, so it would be a condition used pursuant to what's in the ordinance.
Okay. Oh, yes.
Get through the motion to amend.
Okay. Number four, well, as, let's see. Well, you have the, the schools mentioned in 4A. I don't know if us putting them in as conditional, would that need to change 4A?
No, because, because there's two different, there's two different things. One's a use, one, one is a, one's a, wait, yelled at. One's a use permission to make the schools a conditional use, but then it is a, in 4R, concessions to, to, to the scope and size of the ability.
They're, they're development standards.
Okay. All right. So number four, the proposed combined cumulative gap cap on square footage for public and private school use, event center, reception hall and training center be removed and replaced with a limit on square footage on an individualized basis by uses follows. A, public or private school shall not exceed 20% of the building's square footage, which is approximately 45,000 square feet. B, event center reception hall shall not exceed 7% of the building's square footage, which is approximately 15,000 square feet. And training centers shall not exceed 3% of the building's square footage, approximately 5,000 square feet. And then five, the square footage allowed for daycare, nursery schools and childcare establishment use be increased from 10,000 square feet to 15,000 square feet or no more than 7% of the building's square footage. And six, that overnight parking shall be allowed for delivery vehicles for any restaurant or user of the existing commercial kitchen facilities in the building, provided that such vehicles are parked in a designated area of overnight parking and shall not exceed eight vehicles.
A second.
Okay. Now, Mr. Carrier.
All right. I need to back up and I thank you, Councilwoman Vermillion, for doing that, because I was going to do the same thing. I've got some questions for staff and my questions are more centered on how we got here. And I've expressed publicly my concern about the process and how the applicant was treated. But it also goes back to the comprehensive plan. And quite frankly, several folks in this DAS had gone out and told the public that it's just a plan. It's not zoning, it's not code, it's just a plan, just like PUDs are a plan. So here we are. We're using that plan as I see it. It's not a law, it's a resolution and a guide and a runway. But what we've done is we've created arbitrary standards within there to give the administrative state the ability to try to dictate what the citizens of the community have to bring in tax revenue to be able to develop their own property. That's so backwards to me, it's unbelievable. And I warned the community last fall with Save Hilliard that this is where we were headed because our standard for the comp plan was how much income tax or tax revenue a piece of property was bringing to the community and not what was so eloquently said by Councilwoman Vermillion. What and how does it best serve our community? I couldn't have said it any better, Cynthia. So my first question is, the comprehensive plan is not a law. Is that correct, Thad?
It is not regulatory. It was adopted by council, but it is a guide to council.
So the true aspect of our decision-making should be based on the zoning code, correct? In this case, a PUD.
The zoning code is regulatory. It, it is law that is self-executing. The community plan is there for when instances such as this, where a change in the law is requested, here a change in the zoning text for this PUD, to provide a roadmap, guidebook for council's consideration and the public's digestion of, of the.
Okay. So in this one, I asked for clarity from City Manager Crandall directly. And I have a list, so this is going to take a moment. I would like to understand, I think the community deserves to understand, the conversations that staff has had with the Hilliard City School District, both Dave Stewart and John Marshausen relative to the BMW building. Can you provide some clarity around those discussions?
I'm not sure that those are germane to this.
I, I didn't ask if it was germane. I asked you to provide the community with information about what you discussed with the Hilliard City School District relating to the BMW building.
Sure.
If you refuse to answer it, that's fine. Just have it put on the record that that's what you're going to do.
I will say, as a matter of parliamentary procedure, the scope of questioning deliberation while a motion to amend is on the floor is limited to the subject of that motion to amend.
So I cannot ask my questions, is what you're saying, because there's a motion to amend before the?
You can ask your questions, but that doesn't mean that they're germane to the motion to amend and that there's any obligation to answer them.
I'd be happy to answer your question because there's misinformation out there that's being spread mostly by you, as I've, as I've seen through documentation.
The dreadful misinformation. Please clarify what I've screwed up here.
I, I have had a conversation in the past with our former school superintendent, John Marshausen, about would there be a possibility for that building, for them to use part of it regardless of who the next owner may be for the administrative offices that the schools have, because those are outside of the school limits. When I came on board as the city manager, I heard from several council members that they would love to see the school administration be in the city of Hilliard and we would collect that income tax. So it was geared toward, you know, that could be a possible tenant of a building that is really high income tax generating. So that was the focus of my conversations with John Marshausen.
So the school, you're not aware that the school studied the, the building for conversion to an elementary school and like that?
Oh, no. I don't, I don't think that happened at all. No.
Okay. All right. Would the schools be using that plan, using that facility, as you discussed with Dr. Marshausen? Would that have been a direct contra to the comp plan?
No, it's administrative offices which is permitted use currently within that building under the zoning.
All right. And then I need to understand, because I look back at the code and I couldn't find anywhere where school use was, was required to be a conditional use within the city code. Is that, am I wrong in that assessment?
So in other districts in the city code, school uses are conditional uses.
It's this PUD that does not have a school use as a conditional use in this, on this property, this subarea.
School uses are not contemplated in this subarea as it exists today at all, permitted or conditional. If it's adopted as a conditional use here, that would be at least a partial, an approval with condition of the property owner's application.
Okay. And what legal basis does staff grant or have the city have authority to designate uses by floor? I've never seen that. I just heard a little bit about it tonight. Help me understand that.
So it's, the nature of zoning, just in general, is that private property uses and configuration are limited by law to accommodate what the legislative body's conception of the general welfare is. That's zoning. Private property rights are limited by zoning, fact of life.
Okay.
It is common for uses to be limited to certain floors or to be required on certain floors, particularly if you find, for example, like a form-based code, it'll say first floor has to be retail, maybe second floor has to be office. This is a similar application of that, albeit more robust than simply requiring retail on first, office on second.
But isn't this requiring all the uses that were conditionally being asked for to be on the first floor versus the second, third and fourth?
I don't understand that question.
So what you're treating as similarly situated floors differently is what I'm asking?
Well, floors don't have equal protection rights, so similarly situated floors, that's, that doesn't, that's not a concern of zoning. Zoning fundamentally is the spatial arrangement of uses based on their compatibility or incompatibility. What the staff recommendation does is it arranges them vertically, whereas, you know, conventional Euclidean zoning would arrange them horizontally.
Interesting. So this wouldn't be considered spot zoning then?
It would not.
Under the definition?
No.
Because, tell me why?
So spot zoning is where you have an individual parcel that is singled out for a zoning use that is different from the others, that doesn't bear a relationship to the general welfare. Here, Here, what staff has done is they've taken this application that the applicant submitted, a number of different uses that are in that application, and staff is trying to come up with an accommodation to what the applicant has requested, to say, if we want to maintain the viability of this office building for office tenants, what is a sensible way to do that, trying to keep those office tenants and other uses that staff has determined are consistent with the community plan? Keep those distinct from the other uses, such as school and event center, which are on the bottom, the bottom and first floors, as I recall.
So can city staff limit the use of the community space and say you can't use the community space for prayer or religion?
No.
You can't, they can't, so they could use that space for that function? I want to make.
Correct, so if the community center space is approved, as is pending in this motion to amend, it could be used for religious purposes. Likewise, the event center space that is contemplated in the recommendation from Planning and Zoning Commission could be used for religious events or secular events.
So, and this is from City Manager Crandall, is one of the primary reasons for denial or for adjustment of the proposed request of the applicant simply because of the revenue not being sufficient?
As I stated previously, this is important for economic development and income generating, and that's why the current zoning is for office, which we, as I mentioned before, we expanded those employment uses to the others that we see within central Ohio, within Hilliard, as viable. And, and yes, this is an important piece of property to be zoned this way for income tax.
Let's talk about.
Let me make one more comment, I made this before. There are many other zoning districts within the city of Hilliard that would allow for the desired uses that this applicant wants. They picked one of the few pieces of property that are vitally important to this community for us to continue to be economically viable, healthy, sustainable, to provide the services to our community, not today and tomorrow, that, that we have the responsibility to do. So this is a fiscal fiduciary responsibility, if I can put it in those terms, for council to consider this use.
So let's talk about that real quick, I want to pull that out. The building was empty, was generating no tax income. It was essentially close to receivership, correct? Was receivership, right? Okay. You got the Verizon Building sitting empty, you got the Double Metro Place, they're trying to figure out what they're going to do up there. You've got, you hang, you brought up in P&amp;Z the Battery Four C. And when you went in there, you look at Four C, and it's a wide-open warehouse, and I want to remind everybody, it was a Highlights Building, it was sat empty for years before Four C came along. So you have an applicant that's bringing mixed use, but not the mixed use you wanted. And I want to highlight this, because, folks, I think we have to really address this. The reason is because you're not bringing the city enough tax revenue. Every year I've been here since I've started, we've been 6% over prior year, and we're growing, our revenue's grown, and we got a surplus of $7 million in the bank. And we've got, and we've got revenue that we're pulling out of operating into capital every year, because we got surplus. So at what point, how do you set a standard for that? What is the standard? What is the standard for the BMW property? What should the revenue per acre or per, per square foot be? Because it's not anything I've read or anything we did with the comp plan. It's very, very subjective, and that's why we're here tonight. In my humble opinion, that's part of why we're here. So what is the standard? Right now, the standard's what staff says to the applicant, and oh, by the way, if you want to be an applicant, come before you buy the property, so we can tell you if you can use it for what you want. That's what you've said to the community tonight. And that's wrong. That is absolutely in my heart and soul wrong. So I have the floor, I'm not done. So I'm really upset, and I came out strong saying, what standards are we using? We have other churches, other uses, where, and what are we going to do with this infill and all this Class A office space that everyone says it's pie in the sky, that's going to fill up, and it'll be just fine in a couple of years? We keep pointing to more and more places, and even in P&amp;Z, you were shaking your head, saying, oh, no, we'll find tenants, we'll make it happen. I, I, I could go on, I've got another page, but nowhere is in the ordinance or in a zoning decision, are we, we were using unprolegated, unarticulated financial conditions to make decisions at an administrative level, and it's unacceptable. It, it's adding factors that no one knows until they come see you. That's unacceptable to me. It should be spelled out in our code. I appreciate you motioning, I'm going to stop now, because I could just keep going, and I think I've made my point, but I also would second your motion, and I think we should vote on it.
Does anyone else have a comment?
I'd just like to look at the numbers and kind of confirm this. So if we add up all the things that you have with the community center, the school, the hall, the train, the daycare, you're asking for 47% of the building to be used for those purposes?
I'm sorry to hear, I'm sorry to hear the first part of that question, ma'am.
Sorry, I coughed.
I'm just looking at the numbers, and I just want to confirm that if we accept the addendum proposed by Ms. Vermillion, that would allocate potentially 47% of the building to the community center, the school, the hall, the training center, and the daycare, correct?
It would be, it would be 37%, would it? Yeah. Thought it's better than.
You said 37, but it does add up to 47, so you might want to look at that again.
The, no.
Because the community center, we separated out.
Can you run your numbers with me, please?
Sure. 45,000, private school.
No, I'm sorry, run your percentages.
Sorry?
Run me the percentages.
37.
Can you break it down, please?
Yeah.
It's, it's not that hard.
47 if we included the community center.
Right.
You're right, I haven't done that math yet, so I'll be just confirm that real quick.
Thank you.
Well, I'm an attorney, not an engineer.
Thank you.
I got the same thing, 47, yes.
It's 37%, which includes 45,000 for private school, 45,000 plus 15,000 for event center, plus 5,000 for a training facility, plus 20,000 for a community center. 85,000 divided by 226, that's 37%.
I'm sorry, I've heard people tell me three different things now.
37%.
That's not.
Your question is on the percentage of what, I'm sorry, let's clarify.
No, the total percentage, are you separating, so is your event center and?
They're taking out the community center, is not, they're saying that the 10% of the community center is separate.
Separate, yeah.
Okay, but I am saying, as a whole, you're asking for, with the community center, 47% to be rezoned.
Correct. So 37% is school, event center, training, and almost 9 or 10% is the community center.
Okay.
So correct, you're right.
Thank you.
Emily?
So I had a similar question, and I just wanted to clarify, because I received 167 emails saying that only 10% of the building would go towards nonprofit use, and 90% would go towards commercial. Help me understand where those percentages came from compared to this proposal, please.
The not-for-profit use is the community center. The other businesses, the event center is a private entity. It's a private use by a third-party tenant, whoever that tenant would be. Same thing with the training center, same thing with a private or public school. So these are, you know, tenants that will be leasing space, have employees, pay rent, they're not, you know, part of the community center. So when we say the community center is 10%, it's the community center that will have those events and religious practices and, you know, weekend programs. It has nothing to do with the other for-profit businesses, if you will.
Is there, so the 10% of the building is what you will be retaining for religious use, but you yourself just said events? Why are there two events? I'm not understanding the difference between the event center and the community. So I understand the need for both, but help me understand why they're two separate facilities.
I, go ahead.
The community center, sorry, the event center is designed to be run and operated by a third party. The tenant, so to speak. The, the, the community center will be operated by, by BPH.
The event center is just like the McCoy Center.
And Mr. Carrier already confirmed that the NOR could absolutely use the event center for worship, correct?
Sure. If, if the tenant wants to lease it for a day, to have worship or an event or a wedding, absolutely. But that's not the exclusive use of the event center. It'll be used for any party, any event, for you, for anybody else, and we cannot necessarily just reserve it. The community center itself is, will be by the NOR entity itself, and they can have, it's a multipurpose event center. They can do weekend program, they can do prayer. If they have an event, they want to do it there, they obviously can. It has no relation or tie with the event center that will be in a separate location, separate floor, separate business, just like the McCoy is. The, the community center will be used all the time by the organization. The event center will be used by whoever the event center owner leases that space to, throughout the year, throughout the months. So they're two separate entities have, they don't tie together.
And in your opinion, staff has opposed the community center?
Yes, we have put it in the application from day one. It's been stricken out every time we add it back in. So from day one, it's been the application, and you can go look through the sequence of applications we submitted. It's been in there from day one.
And were you aware of the zoning when the building was purchased?
Yes. But let me, let me say something. The idea, the, we bought this piece, my clients bought this piece of property. We're not, we're not talking about some speculative, oh, they could have gone to another piece of property and bought that.
Sir, I didn't say that. I was speaking and asked if you were aware of the zoning.
Yes, I was, yes, we were.
And you also stated that there was little to no compromise made by the city, but my understanding is the school is listed as a conditional use and what is before us from the city this evening. Is that correct?
That is correct.
We, the school's initial application was for 65,000 square feet. We brought it down to 45,000 square feet, just to kind of get this issue resolved. So we, we brought, we brought up, you know, square footage requirement down, so we can at least get a resolution on the issue of school.
I have several questions for Ms. Crandall, if you don't mind. Ms. Crandall, will you explain why it's staff's opinion that this project is not a mixed-use redevelopment?
Right, mixed use means that it's not a mix of uses in one building, and what the community plan contemplates as mixed use, and you will commonly see throughout central Ohio and other places, is redevelopment of the site. And in this case, our community plan calls for redevelopment of the site around the existing premium office buildings. So they would have other uses, like restaurant and retail, similar to what TruePoint has now, housing of some type, to make the site more vibrant and to be able to have it more viable as the, for the office itself.
So even though those functions are included in the, their proposal, it's because it's all within one structure that it's not considered mixed use?
We would not consider it mixed use, and, and what the concern is, is preservation of the office space within this building, as we've stated before.
And so by the math that Councilwoman Hale went through and confirmed with the applicant, that's 53% of the building would be reserved for office tenants?
In what was brought forward by Planning and Zoning, that's, yes, that's what I believe it would, would be. And I think as we're working the numbers on what the applicant's bringing forward, it sounds similar as well.
Okay. Go ahead, Attorney Boggs.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to say, based on the motion to amend that is on the floor and the percentages that Councilmember Hale stated, then uses of office, development, testing laboratories and facilities, scientific research facilities, manufacturing, compounding processing, packaging, testing, and assembly, all of that would be fit within the additional 53%.
The STEM Academy as well? Will the STEM Academy be in the 53%?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, moving, moving down that line, the STEM Academy, banks, credit unions, and similar financial institutions, personal services and retail, those are limited by square footage, but they are not encompassed within the 47% of the building's gross square footage that is under consideration in Councilmember Vermillion's amendment.
So that, once again, reduces the amount of viable office space. It also introduces uses that aren't supportive of the office use, which is what some of these ancillary uses were designed to be supportive of the office use.
I guess my last question, because I too have asked a lot of questions. And transparently, I struggle with the fact that we have residents who couldn't afford the school levy, and we have a city that wants to deliver services to everyone who lives here, and our job on this body is to make sure we have the revenue streams available to provide those without going to residents, asking them to increase their taxes to us. And so my last question is around the proposal from the applicant and their feelings that the city, they've stated very clearly tonight that the city, from their perspective, has opposed the community center. Is that accurate? And if so, why?
We, we have supported the event center because that use could be seen as supportive of the office use. The community center, which, as they brought it forward, would not, would not be supportive of that office use.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments, questions? Okay.
I just want to thank you all for coming here this evening, for all of those who spoke, and just for all of you for being here today to engage in this important discussion. I want to thank Dr. Arbaza and his associates for inviting me and Ms. Vermillion to discuss this issue multiple times. You've, you've helped me personally to understand your vision, to see what you, you want to accomplish here. And, you know, I've said oftentimes that, from my perspective, government has two very basic functions, one, to protect its citizens from all forms of harm, and two, to empower those citizens. those citizens, both individually and collectively, to reach their full potential. And I appreciate what you're doing. I understand your vision, based on everything that we discussed in our meetings and what everybody has said today and presented today. I personally believe in that mission, therefore, I firmly believe that it's our job as council to empower BPH to achieve that vision, so. That's all.
Anyone else? All right, Emily?
I'm sorry, I just had one final question, because I think it's really important. We have an amendment on the floor, and I would love to know if the city had an opinion on it.
As I stated before, some of the uses that there, some of them are change in uses, and they are not supportive of what would be our goal for this building.
Madam Counselwoman, you are the city. You are the city. You are the city. They are the city. Do not follow your staff into what he himself calls uncharted waters, this zoning by paint, by numbers that I've never seen before in my career. But instead, this city should stand for empowerment of this community, which will still bring plenty to the city's coffers under this plan and this motion to amend.
I'd like to say one more thing.
Okay.
I understand the fiduciary responsibility here, I really do. But going back to something similar to what Ms. Vermillion said, we have to be prepared to invest in the intangible aspects, you know, that you can't put, you can't put a number next to it, about all the things that people spoke about today of what the goodness that this, that this plan, this vision, this community center can bring to not only the NOR community, but, you know, Hilliard at large and central Ohio as well.
Okay, so we're, will you call the roll for the motion?
This is for the amendment.
The amendment, right.
Ms. Vermillion?
Yes.
Mr. Betts?
Yes.
Ms. Cole?
I'm a no.
Vice President Teeter?
No.
Mr. Carrier? Ms. Hale?
No.
President Cottone?
No.
Hailed four-three.
Okay. So now, anything else before we vote on the resolution?
Madam President, may I make a comment? I want it to be really clear that I firmly believe in the value of the diversity of Hilliard and the value that the NOR Islamic Cultural Center brings to the city, and I have not once felt from any of my colleagues or from anyone at the city that that is not how they feel as well. And this has been incredibly difficult for me personally, so I can only imagine how incredibly difficult it is for each of you. And I truly, personally, would like to find a way to make this project work, but we are not there yet. We couldn't get there yet tonight, and that is devastating, and I truly hope that folks come back to the table and continue the work even through mediation to get there, because what you bring to the community is invaluable, and I just wanted to share that. Thank you.
Councilwoman Vermillion, did you want to say something?
Well, yes, so then we have the original planning and zoning thing that everybody's going to vote on now, correct?
Right, that is the question on the floor, is adoption of...
All right. So what does a no vote mean, then?
No vote would mean that the current zoning text would remain in place, and so the only use entitled under the current zoning text is office.
Mr. Carrier?
So what's the applicant want us to do with that? Do you want us to vote on that, or table it, or it's not what you want?
So the motion to adopt is pending.
Right.
So it's either going to be voted on...
You're driving us to litigation, that's what you're doing. I'm sorry. You're going to drive us to litigation. We don't want to sue the city, but that's what you're driving us to.
Councilman Carrier, we have an application of record, and we are entitled to a vote.
We are waiting to the room clears? Or not clear, if everybody wants to sit down, we can vote?
No, I was simply trying to answer Councilman Carrier's question as to the wishes of the applicant.
Okay, I want, yeah, he...
So may I talk to Thad? Can I ask a question? We want to wait, want to wait.
Go ahead.
So Thad, help. The applicant put forward what they wanted, the city put forward what they said they would do, that motion's pending before us.
Right.
But that's not what the applicant applied for. So why are we voting on what the city wants with the applicant's property when they didn't apply for it?
It is not uncommon at all for an application for zoning change to be approved with conditions limiting the scope of that change. That is what is occurring here, so...
Okay. So walk me through...
What your applicant is telling you is that that is not what, that they don't want what the city has proposed as the compromise solution that the city has put forward.
Okay.
You have a motion to adopt the resolution that's on the floor right now. Under your rules, motions either get voted on, or the people who, the person who moved it withdraws it.
Oh, Dee, who moved that?
Ms. Vermillion.
I move to amend. But what was the question?
You also...
No, you moved.
The second from Ms. Hale.
Cynthia moved, and Peggy seconded.
Correct.
May I ask Ms. Cole a question? And what, you say we're not there yet, what would make you feel like we're there?
Councilwoman Vermillion, I don't run the city's development department. It's inappropriate to ask me that question. That should be diverted to the city. There's clearly not an agreement between the applicant and the city for this building. And I have continued, I've watched the applicant even shift in this meeting on what they would do in the building. So it's totally inappropriate to ask me what I think needs to happen in order for this project to move forward. Thank you for the question.
Oh, you're very welcome. I was just responding to your earlier comment, but did not mean to put you on the spot. Thank you.
Dee, will you call the roll?
Ms. Vermillion?
No.
Ms. Hale?
No.
Mr. Betts?
No.
President Cottone?
No.
Ms. Cole?
No.
Mr. Carrier?
No.
Vice President Teeter?
I'd like to share before my vote, and I'm similar to where Ms. Cole is. There's a ton of this that I like, and I like the vision, but there are also parts of it that I have concerns about, and therefore, that's why I'm a no. I've appreciated my discussions with NOR community. I appreciated what the NOR community does, but several times I was told this is a simple solution, and it hadn't seemed simple to me, so.
I think, I think we've all had a lot of questions. I know I've had a lot of questions, there's been a lot of discussion, so that you know we didn't take this lightly, we don't take it lightly. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry. This is my part. Motion fails?
Correct.
Resolution, I don't have the number in front of me, resolution twenty-four R eighty-eight has failed. Yep.
Not done yet. President Cottone, do you want to continue with the rest of the agenda since we've only got a few things left?
Right, is there, Ms. Crandall, do you have anything?
I do not, thank you.
Any staff reports? No?
No staff reports, thank you.
I have no, I have nothing. Any items for council discussion?
Pardon me.
Are there any items for council discussion? All right, thank you. I move to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.